Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, August 7, 2025, at 6:10 p.m. A quorum of the Board is physically present at Austin ISD's central office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, Estound Broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on those platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. We will start tonight's meeting with a very short executive session, and we will be back.
Do we do the preview first?
Wait, are we doing the preview first?
Yeah.
We are doing the preview. Pardon me. We are not doing the executive session first. Thank you. We will start this meeting with a preview of an agenda item that will be considered for a vote at the next board meeting on August 14, 2025. This vote will take place during our August information session, which is now also an August voting meeting, instead of the regular voting meeting so the administration can move forward with the bond sale on August 18, 2025. Meeting this timeline will allow the district to take advantage of a "hold harmless" provision laid out in Senate Bill 4 from the 89th Legislative Session guaranteeing reimbursement of local revenue lost due to increased home state exemption through additional state funding. Austin ISD staff, financial advisors, and the bond lawyer are available tonight to answer any questions during the preview, and I believe this is going to save the district about $15 million. Is that correct?
Yes, it's not immediate. It's over a period of time.
Over a period of time. Yes, over a long period of time. Yes, thank you. Do we have any questions on this item? Okay, perfect. I think it's important we put it on the preview tonight so it doesn't show up as a voting item without some advance notice. And thank you to everyone who's here to share information. Okay, now, we are going to recess our open meeting for a brief executive session. We're going to recess at 6:12 p.m. and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. And when we're finished with the executive session, we'll return to the open session to continue our meeting, and staff is helping us set up in a workshop format down on the floor, so we'll be in a different place when we come back as well. Thank you so much, and we'll be back shortly. We will now reconvene our open meeting at 6:42 p.m., and at this time, we are not moving into the preview. Superintendent Segura, can you please introduce our work session tonight?
Absolutely, President Boswell and members of the Board. Tonight, we will be having a conversation around school consolidations, how those and other types of adjustments within our system, and an update regarding the process, and really wanting to make sure that we reinforce how these changes impact student outcomes. So this conversation today is scheduled for about three hours. I know we have a little bit of a presentation from our coach before we get started, but looking forward to the conversation. So we can hand it over as AJ on the...
I think we have AJ and Ashley with us, so I think that's up next.
Good evening.
Hello, thank you so much for joining us. I understand you're here till 7:00. And are we pulling AJ up? What, and AJ, do you have a presentation for us? Do you want to come? You do not. Okay, so are you looking for questions?
Yes, I'll briefly introduce the topic, and then I'll go over any questions. And then, a few minutes before the top of the hour, I will need to step away. I have a group of students waiting on me, but Ashley is still here with you. If you have additional questions, be honest.
Perfect. Thank you both for being here with us, and I think the context of this conversation, this kind of setting this up, is that this is different from a monitoring session where we're focused on a scorecard item. We are still very focused on student outcomes. It is not dissimilar to the budget conversation we had back in, I think, January that Ashley gave us a lot of guidance on. And AJ, thank you for sharing some more with us.
Well, that's absolutely the way to be thinking about this work, is that in everything that the Board does, the job of the Board is to be the community's representative, to represent the vision of the community, what does the community wants its children to know and be able to do, but also to represent the values of the community, what are the non-negotiable values that have to be honored as the school system pursues the work of accomplishing the goals. And so these two pieces, representing the vision and the values, is what the Board has to bring to bear in every decision that makes. And so you've already discussed this previously as it relates to your budget, for example. When it's time to consider the budget, what the Board is really considering at the moment is what evidence has the superintendent provided us that adoption of this budget will further accomplishment of the goals while further honoring of the constraints in pursuit of the community's vision while honoring the community's values. You do the same thing if you think about superintendent evaluation. The superintendent's evaluation is really a look at to what extent did the superintendent get us closer to the community's vision and the goals while honoring the community's values and constraints. This is no different. This and every other major decision that comes before you benefits from being viewed through that same lens. What do we say are the community's prioritized vision for what students should know and be able to do, our goals? And what do we say are the community's prioritized values, our constraints? And what evidence do we have that this particular decision helps us accomplish those goals while honoring those constraints? So that is the framing, that is the lens that you're invited to bring to this decision and really any decision. So that being the framing, I want to pause for a second. What questions do you have before I proceed? Board members or staff, what questions do you have about this as being the fundamental framing that a board would use when discussing really major impactful decisions?
AJ, someone earlier had asked me, and I would love an answer from you about whether that includes a conversation about our scorecard goals as well as our scorecard constraints? How does that factor into this?
Yes, that's the same thing I'm talking about. And so you, if memory serves, I believe you've adopted five goals and five constraints, goals around early literacy, early numeracy, college career readiness, middle school math, and bioliteracy on the goal side, and then on the constraint side, a variety of areas concerned around the needs of students who've been underserved, engagement with parents, and things of that nature. Those are the things that you all overboard has identified as the prioritized areas of the community's vision and values. And so when you are contemplating these major decisions, those are the exact areas that you want to return to again, okay? As we make this really large crucial decision, how does it line up with what the community has said and what we have codified as our priorities?
Thank you.
Other questions? Board members or staff are on the table?
Hey AJ, thank you for being here.
Of course.
So in this process that the administration has been undertaking, there have been many community engagement sessions where they have really asked questions around what the community values in terms of the availability of schools and the offerings of those schools. So there is a lot of community feedback and engagement in that. While those meetings weren't led by the Board, they informed the Board because there are things that the community has expressed about what they value, what they want available in their neighborhoods, what they want their kids to be able to go to. So I just wanted to just make sure we clarify, like, so we don't have a specific, direct board outcome or constraint around offering of extracurricular activities, right? I mean, it is in there in some ways, but it's not directly related to the band. But the community is, you know, community members have expressed concern about access to fine arts. We've heard that loudly and clearly in the conversations around our turnaround plans and in this process for this. So is that kind of on, is that on limits for us to talk about if we have heard loudly and clearly from the community that that is something important in this particular process? Or do we really need to be able to tie things right back to the 10 constraints and outcomes specifically?
So the first thing I would always coach a board to do is never replace the Board's wisdom with staff's wisdom for areas where the Board is the expert. It's similar to the other way around, that you'd want to be mindful and really circumspect about replacing the staff's wisdom with your own wisdom in areas where the staff is the expert. And so the expert of the vision and values of the community is not the staff. The only experts in the school system, the only people who are selected specifically for their expertise in representing the vision and values of the community is the Board. And so it's perfectly appropriate and expected that the staff would go out and conduct listening and that they would always be thoughtful about what is the impact of any recommendations we make back to the Board based on that listening that the staff does. But that can never serve as a replacement for the expertise that the Board has in representing the totality of the vision and values of the community as a whole. And so that's the first thing, to just clarify, is the staff has expertise, and you would be wise not to just casually discard their expertise because that's what you, that's what they were hired to bring to bear. Similarly, the Board has expertise, and I would never counsel you to casually discard the Board's expertise, which is representing the vision and values of the community. And so the first implication of that is if there is ever a disagreement between what the staff believes that is hearing from the community and what the Board believes is hearing from the community, the Board should hold its own counsel. Like, it is your job to represent the vision and values of the community, and so you should lean into that and rely on that. Again, it doesn't mean you discard what staff has to say, but this is the Board's unique area of expertise, and you should rely on the Board collective's expertise in this area. But I also mean to say that this is a collective matter. It's not any one of you as individual Board members represents the vision and values of the community. You all, when behaving collectively, represent the vision and values of the community. And so any area where you all have collectively said, "This is what the community's vision and values are," then yes, I would stand behind that. I know that you all have collectively said that regarding your goals because you adopted them. I know you all have collectively said that regarding your constraints because you adopted them. And so if there are other areas where the Board as an entity has come together and says, "This is a reflection of the community's vision and values," then I would trust and rely on that. And I would rely on that above and beyond relying on the versions of that that you hear from your staff. Again, not to suggest that staff's incorrect, it's just this is literally the area of expertise that the Board brings to bear, and you should not casually discard it.
Right, thank you very much.
And AJ, I have a follow-up to that. If we're going to say, you know, extracurricular activities have been on a past scorecard, they're not on our current scorecard. We hear that a lot from our community. And when we talk about college career military readiness and enrolling in a post-secondary institution, that's not one of our goal progress measures, but we know that feeds in. When we talk about our understaffed students and opportunities, we know that we don't yet have equitable access to the arts, to athletics, to advanced placement. That kind of feeds that. Is that legitimate for conversation, or because it is not on our scorecard, we shouldn't talk about that?
Yeah, I would be careful about doing too much government yoga, governance yoga. Like, you don't want to be too stretchy with these things. You definitely want to be guided by, what did we literally say is the high priority areas of the vision and values of our community? And then it's certainly reasonable to use your insights to say what things are immediately adjacent to that. You know, so say we have a constraint around caregiver engagement and meaningful partnerships with families. So it doesn't literally say in there that you should have a parent group at each school, but that seems reasonably adjacent to this idea of having meaningful partnerships at campuses with parents, which is literally what your constraint says. And so it is, you definitely want to stick as closely to the actual language of your goals and constraints as you can, because that is what you all have said is the truth of the community's prioritized vision and values. And so I would stick closely to that because that's what you've declared it to be. But it does make sense that there are some things that are reasonably adjacent. But if it takes you more than just a few words to explain that something is adjacent, it's probably because it's not reasonably adjacent. It's probably two steps removed or something of that. I would generally avoid that. You start to dilute the intention. The reality here is that your goals and constraints serve as a lens that focuses in on a very narrow set of things intentionally. And so to take the caregiver engagement example again, that constraint doesn't say anything about having staff do home visits to try to visit with parents. And so if someone came up and said, "Well, we have to do home visits because this constraint requires us to do so because that's how we would get partnerships," I would say that that is really stretching things. Not only does it not contemplate that, it clearly doesn't expressly say that. And the problem with being really stretchy about these things is now anything will fit, and it's no longer a focusing lens. And so in order to say yes to some things, the responsible behavior is to say no to other things. And so the more literally you take your goals and constraints, the more narrow set of available options are still in bounds. And that is a hard thing to deal with because that means you're saying no to a lot of things, and not because they're bad, but just because they're not the area of focus. But the more you say no to things, the more powerful, more powerfully you're able to say yes to the things that you all have declared mattered most. And so that's why I'd say I wouldn't get too stretchy about it. I would try to stick as literally to the language of your goals and strengths as possible with making some reasonable interpretation of that. But the further beyond that you go, the more you render your own judgment about the community's vision and values largely moot by allowing anything to service as something that honors the goals and constraints rather than a narrow set, which is what's literally described.
Thank you.
What else is on your mind, Board members or staff? So what I was going to do next was actually I was going to give an example, but because of your question, I already gave one example on the constraint side. And so I'll just offer one more example on the goal side. And I just scrolled to middle school algebra. I think I said middle school math earlier. It's actually middle school algebra. And so what this talks about is to what degree are we ensuring that we're improving the percentage of our students who are economically disadvantaged, who are completing Algebra I in middle school? There's a lot of evidence why this would probably be a really great thing for you all to do, so it doesn't surprise me this is one of the goals that you all selected. And so when evaluating any major decision brought before you, like things such as consolidation, I'd be intentionally asking the question, Superintendent, what evidence do you have regarding the impact of a decision of this nature on our ability to increase the percentage of our economically disadvantaged eighth graders who are actually completing Algebra? The reason questions like this that directly tie the superintendent back to the goals, directly tie the superintendent back to the constraints are powerful is because there are a lot of decisions that have to be made, whether we're talking about the budget, whether we're talking about evaluation, whether we're talking about expenditures, whether we're talking about consolidation. There's a lot of operational decisions that have to be made. There'll be hundreds and hundreds of decisions. The more that the Board is asking questions specifically derived from the goals and constraints, the more it pushes the superintendent and his team to come up with answers that are derived from the goals and constraints. They're going to come up with answers, that's not in question. But there are hundreds of possible answers, and all of them are probably reasonable. But you don't want any reasonable answer. You want an answer that drives directly back to what are the priorities that our community has declared that we will focus on as a school system? And so by asking that type of question, the proposal that you brought forth contemplates doing A, B, and C. What evidence do you have of the impacts doing A, B, and C will have on improving the percentage of our economically disadvantaged eighth graders who are actually completing Algebra during the eighth grade? And then now, when they're thinking through the different options before them, that begins to serve as a forcing function for the staff to think, okay, we know that when we bring this proposal back, the Board is not going to accept answers and say, "This is the financially most prudent decision," or "This is the operationally most prudent decision." The Board is going to expect us to have made the goal-aligned, most prudent decision, or the constraint-aligned, most prudent decision. It creates a lens for them to look through. And so as you all are preparing to go into this process, Board members, our coaching to you is pretty straightforward. Begin looking for what are the questions I need to ask that directly tie this work right back to the goals and the constraints? And so that's the coaching that we wanted to offer to you this evening. Ashley, what am I missing?
I think you've hit all the high points.
Great, thank you both very much.
Thank you, and I'll remain on the call, so feel free to call me up whenever you need me.
Thank you, Ashley, and I would love to share with my colleagues that I did ask Ashley if she feels like we're going off a cliff and not realizing it to perhaps let us know, because I know it's important to stay focused on this, yeah, while we are here, and she's here to help us do that. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you, Ashley and AJ. Very much appreciate the time before we get going here in our work session. So for our trustees and for our families at home, we have a presentation. The hope here is to provide an overview, have a conversation, and find opportunities in the next several hours to have a candid conversation around different elements that the administration is seeking feedback on, really all in an effort to identify where resources or where misalignment in resources, maybe is a better way to say it, exists, and kind of opportunities to reallocate them to move student outcomes. So if we move to Slide 2, I just want to take everybody through the agenda. Again, we'll talk, we'll discuss the overall purpose, we'll talk about timeline. I want to make sure that our community and our Board can reference the various resources that have been uploaded online and are made available in kind of in paper form here. Discussion topics created some space for those to occur, about 30 minutes each, as well as some action items as we close the conversation. We've allocated three hours of time for this discussion, and I look forward to the work ahead. So, you know, we are going through a very difficult process at the moment, and I think we all recognize that this type of work is challenging. You know, our schools, how we support public education in Austin and in Central Texas, it's core to who we are and what we believe in. But we know that with the challenges we have, we are at a point where we need to make some adjustments to ensure that our students get what they need, no matter where they are in Austin ISD. And so when we go to the next slide, I want to reinforce that this is taking one of several steps, right, to move towards having well-resourced, high-quality neighborhood schools so that every child gets what they need to be successful. There are a couple of words here I want to tease out. Several steps is the first, or maybe a couple phrases I would say. You know, we have gone through multiple budget reductions in the last 18 months, most recently a reduction here in central office. This is, those are all steps, and we have a step before us with consolidations and boundary changes, and there'll be other steps, some of them maybe not even known to us yet. But again, these are all in an effort to move us towards a system that actually can properly resource our schools so that every student gets what they need. So I just want to, you know, communicate, right now, we are not able to do that. That's just the honest truth. I have conversations with the principals all the time, and we're constantly negotiating, you know, what has been taken away because there's been a reduction in Title I dollars? You know, the cost of education has increased year over year, and there have been some, you know, a little bit of help here and there, but it hasn't kept up. And so now we're at a point where we have to make very difficult decisions. And as an administration, and I think as a collective Board, we've been really clear about wanting to stay away from our campuses and protect those things that ensure a high quality education, and we're at that point now where we just need to take this next step. And we hope that this process ultimately moves us in the right direction. And so to do that, there are some things that we have to do, right? Well, the first is that we have to reduce overall costs. Move to the next slide. We need to identify what every elementary school, middle school, and high school will provide at a minimum to our families and to our community. We need to improve alignment within vertical teams. We'll talk about that, the impact of misalignment on student outcomes. Austin ISD has been around for almost 150 years, and our attendance boundaries, I think, reflect that. We want to align, we want access to programming across our district. You know, how do we define access? Is it best to have programs everywhere, or is that something we could no longer do? And so different models, hub and spoke or otherwise, might be appropriate. And I think most importantly, we need to align with the overall direction of the district, most notably our district's scorecard. And all of this has to be done while protecting our values, which is something I certainly believe in, I know our Board does, and our staff. And so we've talked about the stable state before in budget presentations that Katrina and I, our CFO, have given, and this is just another step in getting there. We need to make sure that we're stable. We need to make sure that the expenses we have meet the, are tied to revenue streams that are not going to be disrupted in a moment's notice, like they were just a couple weeks ago with Title II, III, and IV being disrupted. And we need to ensure that we provide the highest quality education in Austin, in Austin ISD, and put those dollars, the limited resources we have, where they're needed most. And so the hope through this work is we get to a place where the quality of education in Austin ISD is not only protected, but we thrive. And so when we talk about, you know, where we are as an organization, there are lots of different ways to quantify inefficiencies, right? There's just, there's a lot of ways to do it. We, as an organization, since I've come on board, have been desperately trying to find inefficiencies incorrect for them. And what we know now in 2025 is that Austin ISD has changed. We're just a very different, a very different school district than we were 10 years ago, or five years ago, or 15 years ago. And on Slide 7, you can see what that change actually looks like when it comes down to footprint, seats within the school system. And what I want to share with our trustees is what this chart represents. This chart represents our utilization rate across each school type, elementary school, middle school, high school, and then a total. The one thing I want to point out is that these utilization percentages are tied to our most recent adjustment in how we actually calculate utilization. In years past, you know, it was maybe, it was very different. You know, it was the number of, you know, spaces that we had that could be identified as a school, identify the number of students that could be tied to that classroom, 22, and then we would multiply, and then we would identify a total capacity. What we've done since, based on feedback from the Long Range Planning Group and the work that we did then, is we actually have gone back and have been very intentional about how we actually quantify utilization, meaning that, you know, if we have schools that have a known number or an expected number of classrooms that support students receiving special education services, we need to acknowledge that is a different student count per classroom, right? And so that changes. We need to recognize that there are other limitations within the buildings themselves, you know, core spaces, gymnasiums, cafeterias. So a lot of that has been considered, and the team has made those adjustments. So in years past, you might have seen an actually a lower utilization rate, right? So because we made those adjustments to really reflect how we operate, those numbers have increased slightly. And so when you look at elementary school, based on the updated methodology, which we've shared with our community, and again, was kind of rooted in the long-range plan work, we have 75% utilization as a district for elementary schools, 69% for middle schools, 83% for high schools, and 76% overall. The green bar that you see there on top is the 85% to 90% threshold. The green bar that you see there on top is the 85% to 90% threshold. And this was, again, work that came out of the LRP, but it's since been kind of, you know, kind of reinforced by the work that the team within AISD has done. And what it states is that a stable state for Austin ISD would be a state in which, as a system, we are between 85% and 90% utilized. That gives us opportunity for growth. It gives us the opportunity to have well-resourced schools, meaning that the number of students can support the staffing allocations, whether it's, you know, you know, fine arts or athletics, or the, just the number of teachers that we have per section or per grade level. And so we put those two things and juxtapose them so that everybody kind of sees graphically kind of where we are and where we would like to get in order to become a stable school district. As we move to the next slide, I want to be, I want to reinforce, I've been asked a lot, you know, what does this savings look like? Well, we know right now that we have a pretty significant budget deficit. We've had lots of conversations over the last two years, and we know that budget deficit. Though it's come down, it's come down being, through some painful processes, and also with some short-term, one-time offsets, and those are just not sustainable. And so we are looking to bridge a portion of that deficit. We would like to target about $30 million, well, actually more than $30 million. The utilization target, between 8,500 and 13,000 seats. Again, that would kind of get you to the 85% to 90% as a system. It does not represent the total number of seats available in Austin ISD, meaning that if we were 100% utilized, that would be a much larger number. And so for context purposes, because I think sometimes we, as a community, and I certainly have, don't spend enough time thinking back as to how we got here. There's been an evolution of Austin ISD over the last 20, 30 years. We grew very quickly in the early 2000s, and we got to about 86,000 students. And since then, we've seen a loss in enrollment. But it's not only happening to Austin ISD, it's happening to really everybody in central Texas, and there are a lot of things that contribute to that, many of them out of our control. But the reality is, you know, right now, in 2025, sorry for that typo, we have 72,500 students and 116 campuses. In 1996, we had 73,000 students and 96 campuses. It doesn't mean that, you know, the, the growth of these campuses wasn't needed because we grew. It's just, it's just a data point, right? And if you look at the history of AISD over the last 150 years, you'll see just various times where our student population was X, our number of schools was Y, and the number of seats was, you know, Z. And so again, not to be belabored, but wanting to just reinforce as a system kind of where we are. I also want to note that, you know, we often look at other school districts, other urbans, and we are a mature school district. You know, we, we grew, we have facilities, and the city grew around us and changed. There are other urban school districts in Texas that have kind of this type of, I would say, trend over the last many decades. And so again, just meant to be a data point for, for sharing purposes. But again, this is reinforced just the growth that we've seen, where we are now. And as we move forward with information in the demographer, kind of what's the expected kind of projections, and how does that impact, you know, the number of seats that we need to have to be stable, what we can afford, and what programs and what services should we have in those schools? You going to go ahead and ask that?
What was the typo you said?
2025, AISD has, should be has, instead of had.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so apologize. Yeah, it says, it says 2005. It should say 2025. So, so, should, 1996, 73,000, 96 campuses. In 2025 today, Austin ISD has 72,500 and 116 campuses. Apologize.
Yeah, apology accepted. No problem, except that the, if that's posted, then let's
I will fix it.
figure out, because that will be a unfortunate misinformation if that is used by somebody. Thank you.
Yep. I apologize. I didn't catch that. So, one of the things, so we have to evolve. The pressures from funding, the ever-changing accountability system, the local context, urban environment, all of these things play a role, and they're unique to Austin ISD. Yes, although school districts are going through changes, but local context matters, and everything that we do as a 10-person team here and what we do moving forward has to acknowledge, you know, kind of these constraints, and they're not going away. And it's also important to talk about the fact that everything we do is going to have an impact on student outcomes, everything. You know, in some cases, and my hope is that over time, it's a positive impact, but we know that disruptions are real, and, you know, these school communities that have blossomed and are incredible, there will be a disruption, and we need to acknowledge that, and also acknowledge, and what are we going to do as an organization to ensure that our students are supported, no matter what transition we, we go through? So as we look at the scorecard and move to the next slide, it's important to just kind of take the larger topics that we have, that we're discussing today together, and just cross-reference them against each scorecard goal. I'm not going to go through this in detail because each section will actually spend a little bit more time. But I do want to kind of tell our community and our staff, and certainly our board, that the feeder patterns, enrollment balance, and baseline expectations for schools, and specialized programming, this is a way to determine if the degree of impact is high, full circle, medium, half circle, and then low. Now, because the, because the topics are fairly broad, you know, please extend some grace because when you think about programming, there are almost countless programs in Austin ISD. And so some of them will have a greater impact, some of them will have a less of an impact. You know, we try to do our best to kind of take it 10,000 feet and say, okay, as we tackle this subject, this is the, or tackle this area, this is the kind of understood overall impact to our scorecard. And then on the right, we listed the constraints that would also be impacted. So, so why now? You know, why do this work now? You know, why not wait? You know, why do it at all? One of the things that I think is important to share is, you know, we do, I believe, we have an aligned board. You know, doing difficult work takes, you know, healthy teams taking hard things on. And I think it's an opportunity that may not exist in the future, and it's a responsibility that we have as an organization to ensure that Austin ISD continues to educate and provide the highest quality education. Community support and understanding. You know, I, I think when we look around, you know, our community, I haven't met someone that doesn't understand the constraints that AISD is feeling. The pressures on, from funding, the pressures from accountability, just the pressures in general. I mean, we certainly feel them. I know our community feels them. And so that type of understanding, I think, is something that is, should be, you know, acknowledged and considered as we move forward. I think it's also important to note that, you know, there, there is evidence of our systems moving. You know, we've, we've come together as an administration and a board, you know, 18 months ago or 24 months ago, I guess, depending on when you start the clock. And there's been real progress in lots of areas. And I think for us to continue to, to see that progress, you know, we need to go through this process. And stable administration, you know, I think a lot of administrations tackle this work, you know, later in their tenure. You know, I'm certainly not super excited that it ends up having to be this early in our shared partnership. But I do strongly believe that this has to be done if we're going to take the next step forward for Austin ISD. And these are just unprecedented external pressures. I mean, it, it's just unreal what we're having to navigate now. And I'm worried that if we continue to delay, or if we don't take this as seriously as we, as we need to, our students, you know, are, are not going to be, not going to be able to receive what they need. That's just the honest truth. So as we transition to the next portion of the presentation, I want to hand it over to Dr. French or Christine to take us through the roadmap, the next couple of slides, and then we'll begin to kind of dive in. And before we kind of go down that path, it is, this is really meant to be a discussion. So we'll have some starting questions, some stem questions to kind of, you know, start it off, but I'll hand it over.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura. Just like to draw your attention again to the project roadmap. I know we've seen this along the way. Just kind of wanted to point out where we are. We started right in April, May, and June and with our data collection and creation, we established, we got your values and priorities when creating this process. We also shared our draft tool with us. We got feedback from our community, incorporated that. We presented that updated draft tool back in June, and here we are in blue, as you can see, at this boardwork session to really talk through everything that we have done thus far. We are in the analysis phase. Our rubric is completed. We will have the updated results of our tool and a scored list of all campuses in, on August 14th board meeting. So I just wanted to remind everybody that this is not a closure list. This is a list that is comprehensive of all Austin ISD schools, but it's going to show some misalignment, and we'll get through there, and we'll talk through what that looks like. But we want to hear tonight a lot of the discussion for some directions that we need on some of our topics, like Superintendent Segura was saying, feeder patterns, boundaries, et cetera, and our programs, of course. So I'll get through there. I wanted to kind of show the second slide if you can go forward. Thank you. Our deliverables, as I said, our rubric is done. It will showcase the areas of misalignment. We are getting contextual analysis, and Dr. French will go over that in the next slide, kind of our two-part tool. We have been meeting weekly with our principal feedback group to make sure that we are ensuring that the contextual analysis from each principal gives us not only right, the data and the quantitative information, but we also get the qualitative information. We know that schools are more than just numbers, and we have history. We have stories, and we have things that are special in their own right for the school. And so we want to make sure that we understand that as we go a part of this process. October 9th, you'll see the draft boundary changes and the consolidation package. So it could say what schools would close, close and/or merge, and then new boundaries, right? A school may not close, but they may get a redraw of boundaries, and what that may look like, and if there are feeder pattern changes. We'll talk about that a little bit more and get into depth. Also, changes to transfer policy and/or programs. October 9th through November 13th, we'll continue, we will, we will start engaging the community on transition plans, right? How can we support our schools? What can we do? We're making sure that we're aligning with our special education department and other things to make sure that we are assisting and supporting those campuses and those students throughout this process and what that looks like. And then on November 20th, our board would vote on the recommended consolidation package. So we will continue to have these ongoing work sessions as we move forward. And next slide, please, and we'll kind of get, get back to our, our process, our two parts.
Awesome. Thank you. So this is just to reiterate the two-part tool, or two-part process. So the first part is nearly done. We are not spending a lot of time talking about this today. We have spent a lot of time with our community over the past couple of months, getting a lot of feedback on this, on our rubric and tools. So this is what would be available next week. And again, as Chief Steenport mentioned, it is really just highlighting for us as a district where we need to better align our campuses in terms of size and programs, and who they're serving, and really looking at it comprehensively. So this is a tool that we're going to use now, but I imagine will serve us for the near future in terms of our different planning efforts that we make as a district. What we're really here to learn from is kind of this part two, and getting feedback from you all on these strategies that we're going to leverage. So as we're going and making these tough decisions, you know, we have ample feedback from the community. We have, we are actively getting feedback from principals about their campuses just to make sure we have the full picture and story as much as possible when making these decisions and discussing the different strategies that we'll be exploring for each campus. And so a lot of the topics that we'll discuss today are really going to be able to inform us and allow us to have productive conversations that we know are reflective of your values in the room. So you'll see them here, and Chief Steenport's already mentioned all of them, and you'll see that the bullets in terms of strategies really align with our discussion points today.
I want to draw your attention to the next slide. I know Superintendent Segura also noted that, that you have them printed in your binders, but also wanted to put your attention there. There is a lot of data, and there's, there's a lot more that we are still working on. So if you see something that you need, please let us know. But we have a lot of information here. It's really great. There, our long-range plan baseline report is amazing. You can see a lot of maps that are very engaging, and you can see a lot of our programming and where they are. So I encourage you to really deep dive. Those are not in your binders. It's about 100 pages. But I just wanted to draw your attention to that specifically. Next slide, please.
All right, we're getting into feeder patterns.
Yeah, so, you know, we, there is a lot of data. So, and, you know, as we have conversations with our board and with community, sometimes another dataset needs to be developed. And so as that occurs, we will continue to upload on the board docs and also make them available. And the goal as we move forward, because this presentation will become a relic, or I should say a reference document, each section will have the attachments that best support that conversation. And so as we move into the next section, the conversation around feeder patterns, you'll see the relevant attachments that are tied to it. And so we've allocated about 30 minutes to the conversation around feeder patterns. When we think about feeder patterns, you know, we've heard this for years about just how wonky they are, and how, you know, a student can have a very challenging experience in Austin ISD by, you know, living across the street from a friend, going to two different elementary schools, coming back together and then separating again, or, you know, one small group of students, you know, having multiple journeys in Austin ISD. And, you know, one of the things that we, as an organization, have wanted to do for a very long time is analyze that and see if there are opportunities for refinement or improvement. When you think about what that impact is, like, what is the impact whenever, you know, you do not have aligned feeder patterns? Well, when you think about it from our scorecard, we decided to evaluate it. And when you think about Goal 1 and Goal 2, you know, early numeracy and early literacy, you know, we don't view that as the largest of impacts, primarily because it's mostly isolated within K5. There isn't a transition that occurs, you know, coming in necessarily or leaving, which is, so that's why we, we had it as a half. We recognize there potentially could be an impact, given the scale, but we identified it as a kind of medium impact. Now, CCMR, when we think about aligned pathways and programming and the tie-in between middle school and high school, we do think that if there is an elementary, a middle school that has a certain program, and the high school that the student matriculates into does not have that program, or there's misalignment, that would have and does have an adverse impact on our ability to move outcomes as they pertain to CCMR. Middle school algebra, it's another one that we believe is sequential. There's a buildup of coursework and then a progression after that point. So we do believe if we have misalignments, maybe not as much now, but certainly prior to the laws changing, that would have been a pretty significant impact. And then by literacy, the seal of by literacy, we want our students who pursue this to have a continuous experience in Austin ISD. And the more splits that you have, the, the more challenging it is for us to ensure that that, that ultimate goal gets met. I mean, it's just, we can't duplicate that program in across that many schools. And so we talk about feeder patterns. One that always comes up is Anderson. And so what we want to do is to give an example of what a truer feeder pattern looks like. And so we have the example here. Anderson High School, we have two middle schools feeding into it, Burnett and Merkison. And as you look at this chart, and there's a reference document in our, in the backup, but also in our, in our documents here, the number next to the name of the school represents the number of schools that that school feeds into. So Burnett, in this case, feeds into two high schools. And, and so if you look at Anderson, just kind of going down, you can see that Summit, Hall, I mean Hill, sorry, DOS, and Davis, 100% of those students all go to Merkison, right? And then for Merkison, 100% of those students track to Anderson. Now, you know, this is, there's going to be the ones and twos, transfers ins and outs, but generally speaking, by assignment, 100% continue on. Now, conversely, look at Eastside. One great example that often comes up that I think is useful to just clearly identify and show is Martin Middle School. So start from the top down. Eastside Early College High School has two primary middle schools feeding into it. schools feeding into it, Keeling and Martin. You can see here, Keeling feeds to two different high schools. Martin feeds to five. Think about that, five middle schools. So no large percent of that student population is actually matriculating to the high school. It's always going to be, you know, 20, 30%, somewhere in that range. And then you think about the students' experience as they progress to high school. You look at the elementary schools feeding into Martin, you have Zavala 100%, Sanchez 30%, splits to two schools. We'll show an example of that moment, Ortega, Govalley and Allison, all at 100%. And so again, this is just one of those examples where a student could have an experience in East Austin, go through, go to Martin Middle School, go to one of five high schools and then, you know, we, that is a disruption, no doubt. And so that's an example. There are many of these. We actually have here in the boardroom, a chart, or I would say a figure of every split in Austin ISD. It's behind you, Trustee Foster, if you want to check it out. It's also in your binder, just to kind of show what the splits look like by attendance boundary in Austin ISD. And so I'm going to hand it over to Rachel to take us through some of the other kind of anomalies within our boundaries that I'm hearing before we get into the discussion.
Thank you. And for those of you that joined us in the community workshops, these are slides that we shared then, so they might be familiar to you. The first is to draw your attention to our small area splits. So in the chart that we've referenced, the flow chart of our feeder pattern, you'll see percentages by each school name. Some of them get as small as, I think 8% is our smallest. That means 8% of that school go to a different school than their peers, right? And so these small area splits are reflecting those small percentages. And these are ones that you see on the screen listed that our demographer have identified for us that we will be looking at and want to discuss with you all and confirm kind of how to approach these. And these are kind of easier ones to manage, but it's where it's very significantly impacting that small group of students that are not able to stay with their cohort. We'll show a slide on the next slide of that and give you two different examples. So the next slide shows both Sanchez and Bowie, those areas. So on the right especially is a great example of multiple wonky splits. So you have Sanchez, which feeds into both Martin and then there's a small split to Lively. And then when it gets to the high school level, it actually goes into three different high schools. So that small section of Lively feeds into Travis and then you have a smaller portion to Austin and then about 50% goes, from Martin goes into Eastside. We also have some maps over to the right posted that show the comparison of our elementary school to middle school feeders and it highlights all of the splits, including the small splits, as well as a middle school to high school. So we can take a look at kind of more detailed or comprehensively if y'all would like. The one on the left is just showing another example of the split between Bowie and Austin and small middle school and just the relationship of those campuses and how they are splitting as students matriculate up. And then we also have a concept on the next slide called island zones, that we are calling island zones. And so these are examples where the actual school boundary is significantly detached in various ways. And so you'll see, one example is Win-Montessori in the bottom right quadrant, in which it is completely detached from the main boundary and there's an entire elementary school zone in between the two. And then there are situations such as Perez, which kind of hugs around one elementary. And there's, you know, some have reasons for why they were done in the first place, but if we're looking at things comprehensively, these are things that it would really better serve our students in the long term for us to really look at and be thoughtful about fixing those to improve that experience and maintain those communities to the fullest extent possible. You'll also see kind of Jordan and Doby. There are likely others in the district. We just wanted to show kind of four of the really obvious ones. And this is something that our demographic team will be able to help us navigate, but we wanted to make sure we got your thoughts on just how to proceed. And our next slide is just really some questions, just to get us started. Again, we want to hear from you all as much as possible. So it's really how should our feeder patterns be structured in Austin ISD? So again, links to that flow chart. And then some of the questions are really how rigid are we going to be? You know, ideally you have a clean, you know, clean feeder where a whole school goes into another, we won't be able to get there. Like that will not be the, the whole district will not be able to have that clean of a feeder pattern because we have too far to go from where we are. So we really need to understand from you all, how far do we want to try to get? So that would be how many splits are too many splits? Is it okay that Martin goes into five or what is the maximum, right? And then how big or small should a split be? And then again, any other thoughts that you might have, but these are kind of some guiding questions that we have for the remainder of our time on feeder patterns.
Yeah, and I think as we get going, you know, we think about the constraint around, you know, engagement, you know, we've, I talked to multiple trustees, like what happens when you have families come together, you know, to support a school community and then they get split, right? I mean, that network, that connection, that support of the school, you know, gets disrupted. And then maybe they come back together, maybe they don't. And, you know, there are lots of impacts with this type of movement in our communities. And so want to open it up to the board to hear, you know, kind of thoughts. The reason we want to bring it up is because this is something that has needed to be addressed for quite some time. We believe there's an opportunity to improve it, to align programming, to create really alignment. There are principals who engage with one another and they're actively engaging with the high school principal to middle school principal, middle school principal to elementary school principal. And every time you have a split and you try to align programming, it becomes more and more challenging. We see that right now with some of the schools that we're supporting in a pretty significant way. And so this is a problem. And we wanted to kind of get thoughts from our trustees around, you know, what they've observed and what they've heard in the community so that we are informed as how we move forward.
I'd like to ask a question about that, actually. So you mentioned a couple of examples about ways that an aligned vertical team can be beneficial, but can you kind of spell out what your team has found as far as the benefits of having an aligned vertical team? Where you could predict where you're, like when you know, in kindergarten, you know that you're going to be at that high school. Are there some benefits you can point to us?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Could those on Zoom mute, please?
And for people watching, Trustee Hunter is with us. We have Ashley with us and Trustee Hunter with us. Thank you.
So, Trustee Kaufman, I think there are probably several, you know, benefits of improving alignment within our system. I think the first is going to be programmatic. You know, we see it often where there's a high school anchoring a feeder, a vertical. And, you know, a lot of our high schools have, you know, certain programs. Maybe it's Austin High with their program or Aikens or, you know, name any high school. And it's always going to be beneficial to align the programming so our students understand kind of what their pathway is and where it's strongest, they align. I mean, we've seen instances where the, you know, fine arts director at the high school goes to the middle school program and helps them plan. There's an awareness, a familiarity when those students move into the high school. From a resource perspective, you know, as a system, we distribute and we move people around. It's always helpful to move within feeder patterns and verticals. There's a lot of work that needs to be done and the familiarity, the kind of keeping connection with students, keeping families engaged, an awareness of what's happening within Austin ISD is always going to be reinforced and improved if we can create consistency as they move through our school system. So it really does impact almost all aspects. Where we see it harm, it's whenever families get split, or sorry, I should say, communities get split, where they have a robust community in an elementary school, strong PTA, you know, students are supported, staff is supported, it gets split, there's not as much familiarity and it just kind of continues on and compounds as they move through the system. I will say that, Trustee Kaufman, in the 2022 bond program, we were intentional about, I'm going to kind of title around to give you a moment, athletics. You know, we invested in fields and tracks at our high schools in an effort to have our middle schools play at those high schools, to build community, to align programming in athletics so that the coaches in the high schools could kind of develop relationships with the students. We know that a lot of students, you know, maybe go to school for only athletics. And so anytime you create disruption in those pathways, this makes it harder for our staff to engage and support our students as they move through the system. So those are a couple of ways. I don't know, Rachel or Christine, are there others you'd want to offer based on what we heard, but that's what we've seen.
No, you said that perfectly. And that's what we heard from the community during our work sessions and our listening sessions, is that the sense of community and also the programmatic pathways, that was what was most important.
Is there any evidence from within AISD, from outside of AISD about the actual benefits to improve student outcomes on academic and accountability measures?
So there is evidence. I don't, I can't kind of reference it at the moment. I will say that, you know, when you look at, if you want to speak specifically to performance, I would point you to where we have, where have feeders historically been more aligned in Austin ISD and what have been the historical outcomes of those feeders? And I think what you would see is a pretty significant disparity. Now, outside the district and outside the region, you know, it's research-based, it's kind of higher level, but it's not, I don't have, you know, if there's a specific high school in a part of Texas that I can reference at the moment.
I think, because I think the complication in Austin ISD is that the misaligned vertical teams typically are in areas of lower socioeconomic status. East Austin, things which also have lower student outcomes currently. And I don't think that those are, there's not a cause and effect there. I think, I think those are both caused by underinvestment and under-engagement in those communities. So I'm just, you know, I think I'm hearing that there's value, I'm hearing from the community for sure, like that there's value in having the aligned vertical teams. But I just wanted to see if we could also tie it back to student outcomes rather than we need to address both things in a community for different reasons. But can we tie those together and say that we're also going to expect to see higher student outcomes? But it's not an urgent thing.
Yeah. I mean, I, what I would say is, to the extent that we can limit disruptions in our students' growth in Austin ISD, we would expect to see an improvement in outcomes without a doubt. You know, we can provide more information, but no.
Did you have a question for us that you wanted us to answer?
You know, I think it's, yeah, so, well, one of the things that I want to say here is, should the administration take on refining and adjusting feeder patterns? Like that is a direct question because the board is who votes on these boundaries. As we said before, this is not just a consolidation conversation. This is about how do you make improvements to our system to support, you know, student outcomes and where we want to be as an organization? We've talked about it in years past, but Trustee Foster and I have had conversations. You know, this is kind of outside, you know, lots of conversations. And so we wanted to hear from our trustees, is this something that we needed to correct for? We believe that there are very large misalignments and there's an opportunity to improve it, but the board takes the vote on boundaries. So is that helpful, Trustee Willie Chu?
So, as I guess a precursor to any conversation, the reality is when you have a system with this level of, wonkiness isn't the word, this level of, and it's not even chaos because it was created out of something, but when you have this level of zigzagging feeder patterns over here and all this stuff going on, unringing the bell is going to be very challenging for community members, even when this is in the best interest of specific communities. Because at the end of the day, I expected my elementary school student to go to this middle school and then to this high school, even if the system doesn't make sense. And so we're going to have to do a lot of work on the front end to talk this through, work this through, have community understand the need for this, even as lots of community sees the need, but it's still going to cause challenges. So just as a precursor comment, you asked about fixing feeder patterns. I would say absolutely, for all the reasons you've talked about. And some questions arise for me that I, you know, have a hint of the answer for. But when it comes to small area splits, when it comes to islands, is there anything we know about the sort of demographics and socioeconomics of the islands or of the splits? In other words, do we have a situation where, huh, this island is really wealthy? This island is really X or really Y? That seems to have an implication for student outcomes and actually has an implication for integration in terms of creating a community that actually reflects the integration of the region. You know, sometimes we have a middle school that's not integrated, even though that, you know, what surrounds it is integrated in an aggregate sense, but all of those folks are over here. And so you've compounded the racial and socioeconomic isolation, which has impacts for outcomes. So the short question is, do we know anything about these islands and these cutout spaces?
Yes, we're able to, as we work through this process, we'll be able to kind of identify the specific kind of demographic distribution of any of the students or areas of Austin that we reassign to different campuses. So as we go through this, we can kind of see are we, which direction would we be heading as we resolve these small splits? Or if we move an island zone to where it makes more geographic sense, what are the repercussions in terms of who is zoned to that campus? But to your point is, you made the point already of the transfer situation and allowing folks to choose also can, we can change the boundary. It doesn't necessarily change who chooses to go to the school.
But to your direct question, right? We can tie any student and their reside to their socioeconomic status. We have all that data.
It seems like that might be a useful, like sort of part of the conversation as we're straightening this out. When it comes to your specific questions about how many splits are too many, how rigid should we be, da-da-da-da, do you have a sense of the positives and unintended perhaps negative consequences of rigid rules? So for instance, I'm looking at this and I'm saying, okay, how about we say no school split, no school goes to more than two other schools? And so no middle school, like two is our line. And we actually strive for a 50-50 or something like that. If we came up with those kind of guidelines, does that have positive or negative implications for student outcomes or for the process?
I can't speak to the student outcomes directly more than what's already been said about the benefits of maintaining that alignment. I will say that if it's a guideline that we know we will try to reach, that is very different from saying this is a metric that if we don't, that's not okay. So I think that's the clarity we're needing. Like we can tell our demographer partner, hey, we, this is, this is our hope. So if you can run and see what this would then look like, they will come across because schools are different sizes in different parts of town and that will really, that is what can create, like the Anderson feeder, those are all larger schools. And so it is, that is, it's hard to change that up because of the way it's structured and that plays a role into how schools have to split through the system. And so I would recommend having targets because it is very helpful to our demographer. The clearer we can be, they can do their job. And because of our timeline, we can't be wishy-washy. So they really do need us to say, this is where we would like to be. And they'll, they're very, they have all the tools at their disposal. We can give them, we've already given them our guiding principles and they've already been, they know our district deeply and they can then give us those options. And if we can meet them, great. And if we can't, we'll be able to say why and be able to really tell that story.
Yeah, and Trustee Foster, I think it's important, we need to hear that five is not a good place to be, right? That's, that's like, that would be a good to hear, you know? And I think that for us, we know that two is probably not possible. I think we're going to move towards trying to get to three at a maximum, but that goes back to the rigidity, you know? If the board, you know, has heard from the community that it should be this or nothing else, which I've heard from time to time, you know, as painful as it may be to make some boundary changes, we've got to do it. So I think Trustee Foster, we're at a point where getting feedback and kind of converging on a recommendation to inform the work is the goal.
So I'm happy to say five's too many, as one trustee out of nine, since the question was asked. And I also look at it and I'm thinking Beddychek, I'm thinking Doby, I'm thinking Martin, I'm thinking Webb, right? Those are the ones. And each one, like, Doby's way up here, like each, each one has its own whatever that makes it unique. And I'm actually not convinced out the gate that two shouldn't be the target. And, you know, and if we go, you know what? Now that we've dived into it and we look into it, here is the here is the negative that comes with sticking rigidly to two, there's actually a reason for three. Then I'd be like, okay, well, how does this tie to our goals in terms of student outcomes? And then we end up at three. But I'm, as one trustee, if asked, and I've been asked, I like two as a target, as a target. And, you know, to your point, then we have the conversation as needed. But we're, I see us talking about four schools, on the middle school level, unless I'm, unless I've got the, you know, unless I'm missing something. So that's where I am on that. And what I like about this is you're talking about some sort of, sort of principles or some targets and the things that are captured within setting that target. A question that remains for me is, do we have a way to capture the zigzaggy nature of some of this? So it's like, here's these elementaries, go into these middle schools, go into those high schools. And it gets kind of weird and I don't know that there's a principle that you can put into play from the board saying, as a guideline, can you avoid this? Maybe, so is there any, first of all, do you understand what I'm asking? And then second of all, is there any suggestion about guidelines to capture that particular dynamic?
I think I understand what you're saying and it may be, and correct me if I'm wrong, because it could be talking boundary rise, right? You've got some zigzags. And I know that, you know, it's changed, Austin's changed over the years, right? We're now an urban, urban city. And so some of those roads may have changed during that, we, they could have gotten bigger, they're now hazardous route. So we could have had that boundary for many, many years and now we've got a huge thoroughfare through it. So we can use physical boundaries to kind of help with that. I know we have hazardous routes for our transportation, we want to consider that as a part of this as well. And it could just be due to development too, right? We've got new apartment complexes, new divisions, so things like that would change over time.
One thing trustee Foster, I think about continuous, you know, areas as well. Could you create a network that has multiple elementary schools feeding into a middle school that only has two splits? But have them be discontinuous, meaning that you have three areas over here, two areas over here, and then something in between? That would be something I'd, I'd want to avoid. But, you know, technically that might be possible, right? I mean, it really could, especially as we go through the conversation, what other things might we want to consider? And then do you ever get to a point where the middle school or the high school isn't included within kind of the boundaries of the other feeder schools that are coming into it? Meaning that if you live across the street and you're an elementary school student, would you ever have the case that you actually don't go to that high school? Right? I mean, that, that, that happened, that could happen. So I think there, those aren't maybe, those are maybe like best practices, we don't ever talk about them. But you could get to, if you, if it's too rigid or if you are steadfast in making it a certain way, then you could run into those conflicts downstream. Like, yeah, it could work, but you might have this other issue occur, right? And because of where our buildings are and where our schools are, I just want to make sure we talk about that as well. So we've seen that in others, I mean, school districts and it could happen here if we aren't thoughtful. None of that made any sense, but?
Yeah, no, no, and it's, I mean, it's, it's actually, it's immensely complicated. And you know what I'm thinking of? And it just hadn't, it had fallen from the front of my mind, the idea of this section right here, which is this little cutout, is actually where this road went from a two-lane to a four-lane with this, and the axis is down there and it's an underpass and it got all weird, but they're still there. That sounds, that, when we see that, that becomes an opportunity for that group to now go this way. And as a board, we're going to have to communicate why that's happening because everyone's going to say, well, I liked going over there. Where others are going to say, thank God, my kid's not passing under, whatever. So for me, I'm glad that we're looking at feeder patterns. Obviously, as part of that, boundaries become part of the conversation. I think the community is telling us loud and clear, as they had for years, that we need to be leaning into this. I appreciate the administration saying, never waste this opportunity. And we kind of owe it to our community to fix our boundaries and fix our feeder patterns as part of this. And it absolutely, as far as I'm concerned, directly relates to student outcomes. And I think of the seal of illiteracy as a perfect example. Where kids are, they're getting it, then they're not getting it, then they're getting it again, and they're doing those zigzag stuff. And I've had several folks, trustee Coughlin, say to me, I really wanted the seal of illiteracy and it was disrupted basically by their, their patterns of schooling. And, you know, that's not, that's not acceptable, so.
Ditto what he said, that's my feedback.
And I have a related question, talking about the size of splits and the impact we feel like that has on student achievement. Like, do we have a sense that students who stay together in a group and travel together have more opportunity to have aligned academics that support that achievement? In middle school math, say, if they're coming, you know, if eight, 90% of kids from one elementary school are going to a middle school together and the other 10% are going somewhere else? And maybe that middle school that the 90% go to works closely with that elementary and the 10% go to a different school? Like, do we have a sense that they're going to have different academic opportunities when they get to middle school for the things we're caring about because of that? Like, does, does the size of the split, do we have reason to believe that it affects academic opportunities for the things we're talking about on the scorecard?
Oh, now, yes, it absolutely does have an impact. You know, and, and I think you described it actually quite well, I mean, the way that you were framing the question. You know, that's, which is why I think we'll talk about a minimum split. You know, what is the minimum split that any school should have? You know, five, if it's 10, if it's, if it's going to two different schools, but it's 10 and 90, that's not ideal, right? I mean, so I think we've talked about, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, about 30%, 33% as being the minimum? And so that kind of gives you the critical mass of the student body to kind of maintain culture, climate, you know, have enough of an impact on the, the role, I guess, how they receive at the, the school that they've matriculated into. And then if they actually reconverge at a high school, you know, the body is big enough to, to kind of be supported in honestly a different way. But 33, was it 33% kind of where we landed as a minimum split?
And I'd say I'm very supportive of both limiting the number of schools, you know, limiting the number of places people fragment to. I, I agree that like the dream scenario would be two if we have to have it, but, but, you know, not wanting to have to do illogical things that are creating different harm to do that, but kind of moving toward that five is absolutely too many. Looks like four is absolutely too many. And then when I look at this, I see a 2% split, a 3% split, a 7% split, an 8% split, a 9% split, an 11, a 12, you know, another 12, another 12, a lot of really small splits that, you know, are well below the 30. And I would say if you were going to look, again, trying to get toward the, you know, toward that, if, if there's a place where that might not be workable, I wonder if it would be possible or helpful to, as a kind of an alternate to think about if it's a school of 400 kids and 25% are going somewhere, or a school of 800 kids and 25% are going somewhere, that might, I don't know if you feel like that critical mass might help mitigate academically? But I just wanted to kind of throw that question out there as well. But yes, I think the size of the split matters and I think the goal of splitting less definitely matters. And I really appreciate the conversation about why we think that supports family engagement as well as the academic things that we're focusing on the most, so thank you.
And president Boswell, one of the things that we are going to do as an administration is to get into a cadence of evaluating boundaries on a more frequent basis. I mean, right now, we're, we're going nine, 10 years, we have different processes, you know, we really need to get, we need to be able to kind of adjust as things adjust around us. So as part of this work, you'll see a recommendation, a lot of it born out of the L R P work regarding, you know, when, when to evaluate, what administrative tools do you use in year one? You know, when do you take more, kind of a stronger approach in year two? And then ultimately, does that lead to a boundary change? And then if the boundary change is of a certain type, you know, it's this process. If it's, you know, a small adjustment around an apartment complex that, you know, kind of started having a different student population, that might be path A, but if it's a, you know, emerging of schools and it's path B, we just, we haven't had that in a very long time. So that'll be part of this process too, we'll bring that to you all.
Thank you, and I also, someone had asked what we, our community, and I really want to call out that what we, we have heard for a long time from our community anecdotally about a lot of these feeder patterns is really lining up with what we're hearing empirically about the data you're bringing to us about the impact this has for the options our students have and, and the, the things we're measuring most. So thank you for that, our community has been saying this in a different way than you're saying it, but it really does line up together, so thank you.
So I had to kind of two different trains of thought on this. One, you know, the first one would just be planning for growth in the future or the change, changing landscape of, of the city. So that if we're proposing the new feeder planners, that they're, you know, considering changes, you know, for the years going forward. I certainly think, you know, one of the pieces is being able to have confidence in the community that these feeder patterns are going to be serving them for years to come. I mean, obviously, it's been a big thing to get to this point, to be discussing this. But, you know, I, I would want to be able to see that there's a high confidence in whatever proposal was brought forth in the, in the value of the realignment so that, you know, the, again, that the families can have confidence in that. And kind of along those lines, you know, mostly what comes to mind are all the constraints that we have around this. You know, really underserved students for sure, but, you know, the caregiver engagement and the historically marginalized groups in particular. I know that also tends to fit a lot with the east side. I think some of the, you know, things I would like to see are how the feeder patterns would reinforce, I think, some of the community aspects there. I know that's one of the things that I think many of the other trustees have already said, but, you know, from the community is having confidence in, you know, those, the lineage going through those feeder patterns. So I think that's, that's a really strong point and I, you know, I was also tying it in to some of the campus climate and, you know, kind of around the S E L type goals of, again, having those strong communities with those students tracking with each other. To me, that, that really fits into that part of, you know, why we have those constraints there. So I think a lot of kind of the add-ons around the academic vision is the community piece and making sure that those students are, are tracking with each other. I really think even with the, the special education students, another good example is particularly for kind of students that, that really are looking for that inclusion experience, that's based on the other students knowing them. And I mean, you really see that from kids that track through elementary and middle school, that's how they're getting to high school and being able to really engage is because they have already years with the same students. And so I think that's a, you know, a benefit that I would like to see taken into account in any planning around the feeder pattern.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. The one thing that I was reflecting on as trustee that we, that we go to was speaking is just the evidence of families choosing, particularly in the areas where the feeder patterns are so disjointed, an option where there is continuity. Idea and KIP, they have K through 12 all in one building. And that is where the majority of those campuses are located, is in the neighborhoods where the feeder patterns are so disruptive. So while I don't have like a specific number that I could recommend, I have personal experience going to Beddychek and a small split going to Travis that didn't make sense to me, kids that lived in Battle Bin. But I would say getting as close to like one unified as possible.
Yeah, one thing I appreciate the, those comments for sure. One of the things we've observed, I've observed in the last two and a half years is, you know, and this really came true as we were thinking through some of these initiatives and doing the work over the last two years. Vertical teams plan together, they work together, they do professional development together. And it, it's very challenging at times when you see splits like this. And it can be confusing when there's kind of different things being done. You know, we, we allow for our school communities to, you know, create, you know, professional development opportunities, kind of identify focus areas. And to the extent that they can align that with the middle schools and ultimately the elementary schools, it just creates a better experience for all of our students. And, and right now, unfortunately, you know, many of our feeders can't do that, at least in that, not to that same degree. So I just wanted to kind of make that point because I have seen that as a challenge over the last year and a half or so. All right, any other thoughts, ideas? Again, it's been, it's been very helpful, the conversation's very helpful, certainly happy to tackle the next question. But anything else from any of the trustees? All right, moving on, y'all are on time. So we've allocated some additional time, so 30, about 30 minutes, though we're a little ahead, maybe I shouldn't say that, regarding enrollment. And, you know, we, we struggled about, you know, do we say balanced enrollment? Do we say, you know, utilize, like, because there's so many things that, that, that kind of contribute to how we define enrollment. You know, a student body, student population. And so we, we have a couple of questions here that maybe kind of probe into different areas and, and, but before we do that, you know, we believe that enrollment like really impacts every goal to a very significant degree. You know, if you think as enrollment as a percent of utilization, let's say, you know, there's a school that has, it's very under-enrolled. You know, we often talk about, you know, what is our teachers' experiences in those schools when there's only one teacher or maybe two teachers per grade level, and we have those. You know, what does it feel like when you don't have partners to collaborate with? You know, what, what is the challenge that we have as we build up different programs for students and they don't quite make, you don't have the resources to make it happen? We think, so for, certainly for early literacy, early numeracy, we believe that enrollment has a significant impact. For C C M R, we think a lot about, do we have a student body to actually make for that unique programming in that high school? You know, what we find often now is sometimes it's challenging to get the certifications needed to support a certain program. We often see that if a teacher leaves with a certain certification, the program, like, sometimes will, will fade and, and ultimately go away. And so to the extent possible, when you have a larger student body, you know, you can, you know, you're able to afford more easily, I would say, those resources and those supports. And the same is true for middle school algebra and certainly by literacy. I, I do want to also think, tell you that we did think about it also from a total student balance perspective, and we'll talk about that. We have, you know, schools that have, you know, really high percentages of students who are identified as economically disadvantaged. You know, we have schools that have very low numbers of students who are identified as economically disadvantaged. You know, what are those students' experiences and as we go through this process? You know, what, what decisions will we make that, you know, impacts that student body? And how is that going to impact their lived experience and ultimately the outcomes that they'll achieve here in Austin I S D? So we wanted to, to kind of create the space to have that conversation. I, I do, as we go to the next slide, slide 25, you know, when we talk about balanced, balanced enrollment, this is again tying back to the L R P. And you saw me talk about it in one of the earlier slides. Between 85 to 95% full is a, is a good kind of healthy number to have in a school when you're talking about just overall staffing allocations, where we're able to provide a safe environment. You know, if a school gets too dense, it, it truly does become unsafe. And we've experienced that here in Austin in years past. And so we think about, you know, if it's too full, you know, or too empty, you could have, if it's too full, might need portables, costly, crowded spaces like cafeterias or gymnasiums. We often hear about, you know, lunches going really early in the morning, having lunch at 10:00 AM and sometimes very late in the afternoon. If it's too empty, you know, fewer programs for students, extra space not well utilized. You heard me talk earlier about the staffing challenges we have when you have too few teachers per grade level. These are things that are very well-known, they certainly impact student outcomes. But there are lots of things competing for us in building up those numbers. And one of the things that has been prevalent in Austin I S D for a very, very long time are, are transfers. And so we have policies in place that draw students from their are transfers. And so, we have policies in place that draw students from their home campus. And it's something-
Next slide, please.
Next slide. You can go a couple of slides. Next one, Josh. You know, we've, we've heard this a lot in Austin ISD that there, you know, families, you know, are choosing with their feet. And they're choosing, and what I always say, choose what's best for your student. We always say that. We want our families to do that. But, we have to think back, why aren't families choosing these schools? And when you think about the average in district transfer rate for Austin ISD at twenty-five percent, like, that's telling you something. You know, why are twenty-five percent as a district of students in our attendance boundaries not choosing their home campus? Like, what have we done over the last thirty, fifty years that have gotten to this, gotten us to this point? And so, we wanted to have a discussion with our trustees about what are the implications of families not choosing their neighborhood campus? And what, you know, what options or what strategies would, are available to address the enrollment challenges that we have, right? We just, just referenced some of the movement across the city. And so, I don't know, Dr. French, if you want to add anything as far as specific questions, but those are two certainly we want to pose to the trustees. We've talked about it for a long time. We know there's movement in the city. We have charts that demonstrate how some schools, there's mass, massive amounts of students just leaving the attendance boundary.
Yeah, there's some, you know, twenty-five percent's the average. So, there are some schools that are up to seventy percent of students are choosing not to attend their zone campus. And that's why when we talk about boundary changes, there are some to where schools are incredibly under-enrolled, but if every student in that zone chose, they would be too full. And so, that's really why this conversation is so important because we'll need to hear what y'all are wanting us to do about those situations because we will have to make those decisions now is the time. So, as y'all go through the conversation, we might pepper some prodding questions, but I think just hearing general discussion and approach to these two questions is a great start.
And I think it's important to note that AISD as an organization has not done, done a good job of controlling transfers. You know, I think that there are, have been instances in the past where we have a transfer policy and we don't control the caps, the campuses, and they kind of grow and grow and grow and grow. And then, all of a sudden, you know, a school is over- enrolled. And you ask, well, why is it over- enrolled? And you realize, you know, well, no one ever stopped to control the transfer in rate. Those are things that we as an organization have historically not done. It's something that needs to be done as we move forward. But, again, you know, policy, transfer rates, those are things that are board-level discussions and conversations. And so, we wanted to kind of talk about that with you all. And we can have a separate conversation around student population. I think it's also important to note, you know, where we have high percentages of students who are identified as economically disadvantaged and what are the impacts as we move students in Austin ISD? If we continue to concentrate or do something that moves us away from the average, you know, as a district, our student population is fifty-point-two percent economically disadvantaged for the TAPER report, twenty-three, twenty-four. When you think back to just, I don't know, eight years ago, we were near sixty percent. And it's not something that is, you know, alone to Austin ISD, it's happening within the city. But, we also have schools, forty-four schools, that have eighty-five percent of their student population identified as economically disadvantaged or higher. And so, just as we have both conversations, I wanted to kind of put that out there because when we talk about boundary changes and movement of students, I want to always be thinking about, are we moving in the right direction or the wrong direction? We're not going to be able to get every, every school equally balanced because we're in a bigger system, a city that has grown and codified. But, we can certainly do our part. And I want to make sure we have a conversation around that.
And talking about our transfer policies, because those implicate what, what happens with this process, I just want to echo the community and what we heard from them about, they know that the transfer policies will, will change with this. But, I think what we heard resoundingly is, resoundingly, that what was most important to them was to keep a grandfathering policy, to continue their child at that same school until they can age out of that top grade. So, I just wanted to echo the community. We heard that very loud and clear.
And can I ask a question about academics and that, about our scorecards specifically, really all of our goals? And the idea of moving a child out, if we move a child in third grade or in eighth grade or in eleventh grade, do we feel like that has an impact on all the things we're measuring on our scorecard and constraints and, you know, the, the goals?
Oh, it would have an adverse impact.
Yeah.
I mean, significant adverse impact, you know, stability.
Wanted to hear you say that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, it is, that is why those types of transitions are so important, especially in an organization as large as Austin ISD. And so, as we move through the work, we'll absolutely be proposing those. And it will not exist only in this as well. There'll be other transitions for other elements of this work.
Yeah. So, I will, I would be really supportive of that, what we're hearing from our community because I think that's a huge part of why our community is saying that. So, especially because it does line up with our goals. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, I don't know if this is a quest for feedback on this, but as we adapt our transfer policies, the grandfathering just kind of makes sense to not affect that additional disruption. While at the same time, sort of going forward, having, you know, new sets of rules in place where those new sets of rules make the most sense. And then, as a board and as a community articulating why we're doing this and, you know, kind of sticking to it and having fidelity in our systems and having guardrails and guidelines in our systems so that, you know, so, you know, what we know about how this works is that folks learn how to game things. And the gaming is what undoes good policy. And so, our good policy is going to have to be effective with fidelity. I, I want to ask about this eighty-five-point-nine percent utilization idea. It, it offers us a sort of structuring framing that I wonder if it doesn't limit us and if our imagination can work a little bit differently. And if it can't, it can't. But, if you have a footprint of twenty acres and a building that can do whatever, and we know that our enrollment as that facility is laid out now is going to be only fifty percent or only sixty percent. But, we also know that if a student was going to Choate or Lawrenceville or Phillips Exeter Academy, the student-to-teacher ratio is five to one. And the resources are apportioned in a way that has every student getting what they need and then some. And we might have, lo and behold, the same space where we have under enrollment according to our current utilization numbers, that's also a particularly high-needs space where we benefit from a lower student-teacher ratio, where it's better to have a better ratio in terms of counselors and other support surrounding kids. And it's indeed more expensive in terms of the number of human adults working on behalf of the kids. But, this is what serves our kids best because the needs are there. Could we reimagine so that this campus shrinks? Or at least, you know, how much of the building we use shrinks? And the other part becomes something else that's a library or something else that is adjacent to our mission and supports our mission. And so, now, we're not closing the campus. We're reapportioning within the campus in order to both do all this economic fiscal stuff, but more importantly, serve kids better. So, I guess I'd like to sort of push on that or play with that and ask for your thoughts.
So, I'll go first. My first thought on that is, you know, when you think about kind of all the different things we're trying to navigate, you know, the costs, the administrative costs per campus is what drives kind of the savings as you consolidate. It's not the teacher-to-student ratio, right? Not as, not as much as you, we would think. And as we go through the analysis, that's not the driver. So, the preferred approach should be to have two schools in one campus that have a lower teacher-to-student ratio with one administration team versus two, because what we're talking about is the ratio of the teacher-to-student, not necessarily the principal-to-teacher, right? And what we just discussed earlier is having more teachers collaborating is a benefit. I think sometimes we think of smaller schools being agnostic of the space that they kind of are within, meaning that you can have a larger school and still maintain a lower student-teacher ratio. That can, that can happen. And I think that, you know, we have the ability to kind of explore things in that way. But, I, I wouldn't necessarily want to just kind of consume half the building. I, I think that maybe doesn't kind of get at the root of what we're trying to solve for. I think what we're trying to solve for is how do you provide the appropriate student-teacher ratio or counselor-to-student ratio in the areas that need that type of support? And then, so, I don't know if that is helpful, trustee Foster, but it's a, I think sometimes if we think of a smaller school, the assumption is that, you know, you can't still maintain many of the benefits of a smaller school just in a larger footprint if you have more students. Because it, really, it's the teacher-to-student ratio that we keep hearing and what we talk about over and over again. If you have, you know, five, five classrooms that have a lower ratio versus five that have a higher, you know, you still have five teachers in the case. But, one administrator, you know, one assistant principal or whatever it might be. So, just a different way to think about it. I think we can explore it. But, just kind of a different way to push back on kind of different ways to break it down if that's helpful.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura. I was going to frame it, frame it the exact same way. Just really talking about building efficiency, right? Because we have building costs, we have staffing costs. But, making sure we, we can do both, right? We can be efficient with our building and still weigh our student-teacher ratio. That's something that Austin ISD can control. But, also, how do we, how do we do both, right? How do we make the building more efficient? And this may play into our future conversation about programming too, right? Really thinking about, okay, if this building is not utilized for the current setup, what can we do in our programming? Maybe we have opt-in choice schools at this that we really utilize the footprint, really utilize that location and property. Maybe it's more adjacent to the folks who need it the most.
Yeah, I think that student need should drive the conversation, right? And, yeah, just less, the less the cart get before the horse. What do our students need and how do we provide it is kind of the way I'm trying to think about it as opposed to the building first, if that, if that makes sense. But, yeah, all right. More to ask.
I think, you know, we can't afford the current status quo.
Right.
I think is the, is what-
Right.
It's, so, we can't even afford like what we're doing now. And so, I, I want to continue to think about, okay, how do we provide the resources to the students, but the students that need those resources? Like, it can't be the same for everybody. It needs to be, what does Matthias need? What does Helica need or Sophia? Whatever, whoever. And it's different throughout the city. But, when you add all that up, it's still, you know, more than what we have. And so, I think both can be true, but we can't only lean into one without acknowledging that there's still going to be a cost for, for it all. So, yeah, it should be student-first for sure. But, we can't afford what we're doing now for students.
So, I appreciate your comments, trustee Foster. Think about school size as being something that's like, I'm just curious to know like how that even factors into all of this. I know that came up in twenty nineteen when we went through this. And I know that there's research that says like sometimes smaller schools are better, particularly for kids who have certain characteristics. And so, I'm just wondering if that is something that we are, like, how, how are we going to approach that generally speaking?
Well, I think, how would you give me some, I mean, you know, I think there are lots of ways you can approach it. And I think small is, is small a hundred or small three-hundred, right? I mean, I think that's what we need to have a dialogue around because in twenty-twenty-two, we did create the opportunity and the space to have a smaller designed school. But, that was not a hundred-student school. That was still, you know, a four-hundred or three-hundred-and-fifty or four-hundred-and-fifty student school.
Okay.
And when we think about the costs that impact our general operating budget, it's an administrative cost, not necessarily building or, or improvement cost as much.
Yeah.
So, I think it's part of the work for sure. I, I think, you know, there, there has to be a floor. And I think we need to maybe come to the, to the board after these conversations and say, okay, based on where we are, acknowledging that small school models are, are, are appropriate in many areas. And in some areas, in infill projects, meaning like in the urban core, like, you, you're not going to be able to do anything too crazy size-wise. But, could you operate a school at fifty students, seventy-five, you know, a hundred? Like, you know, there, there is a threshold. And I think that we just have to be honest about where we think that is as an organization.
And that, yeah, I think that's kind of what I'm getting at is like, how do we, how do we deal with that? And how do we kind of address that? Like, and kind of thinking about, okay, what is it okay to do a three-hundred-person student school? What is it okay to do a larger one? Like, I just don't know how we would come to those decisions.
We did some work in the LRP that identified kind of where, where that would be most appropriate initially. I think it requires going back and refining and updating. But, there was some, some thought at that time around, given on the distribution of schools that we have, where is it appropriate to have a smaller school model? But, that model was still, I don't, I don't want to misspeak here, but I don't think it was less than four-hundred or maybe three-fifty. It was still a sizable school.
Okay.
You know?
And that, do we have, and I don't know if this is part of this discussion or maybe when we're talking about special programming. But, do we have instances in our district where we're sort of creating our own enrollment problems? And we're, by the way, you know, by offering special programs in a neighborhood school that some people in the local neighborhood might not choose. And so, it's kind of creating, you know, forcing them to go somewhere else. Like, I, I know that there are some examples. So, you know, I think we all know that there are some examples like that. But, I really want to know, like, like, that doesn't fit in a rubric, you know? It doesn't, like, we've got to just kind of figure out, like, what is, I, I really want to know kind of like what your thoughts are on that. Is that something that's going to be part of your design here?
That is a very complex question. I, I think, because both things are true, right? I think that families can choose to leave their school because the program doesn't exist. Some families may choose to leave their school because there's a rating that's been applied to it. And maybe that's, you know, that's what they choose to, to use. And I think there are programs elsewhere that are very unique that you couldn't duplicate, right? That, that are just not possible to duplicate at scale, that choose families to pick a different school. So, there's lots of movement. I think we would have to really think through like how we understand which programs are drawing which. I think it's important to identify what are the foundational programs that we know all should have and then create some level of autonomy for, you know, like other, other programs on top of it. What we run into now is, you know, honestly, we have some programs that are duplicated in very close proximity to each other. And they were done in an effort to draw students in, right? Some of our fine arts programs are kind of structured that way. We have some programs primarily tied to CTE or PTEC that are kind of isolated where it's pretty hard for some folk, for some students to get to. But, what we can't do is duplicate everything everywhere. Like, that's just not possible from a staffing perspective and certification perspective and also for, you know, A space and then I think I'll say three and you build out. Like, some of the programming is very unique as far as the space that you're using. So, I'm curious, if you have ideas, I mean, you know, we're, we're really trying to think through how to solve that because we want to understand why, you know? Like, are they, and, and sometimes, you know, I will be honest with you, being here my entire life, sometimes it's perception. You know, I mean, that's, sometimes perception drives, you know, movement. So, so we have to identify resources, move them to where the schools need those resources, address the challenges and accountability and be honest about it, right? Because it, it's, it's hard to, to tell a family, you know, that, that's made a decision around accountability, you know, why they should choose this school. And I can tell them, like, it's a beautiful school, it's diverse, the culture is great. But, you know, that's my experience, right? I have that. So, it's just, it's difficult. But, we're, we're open to ideas. That's what this is about. Let's have a conversation. And if you think there are ways that we could explore that, we're happy to do it.
And I, if I want to interject, we got a text from Ashley.
Okay.
And I think when we're talking about special programs and we're pulling it back to our scorecard, we're talking about our CCMR goal, our college career readiness goal, right? And what are we talking about? Our, our CTE programs, our special, our early college high schools. A lot of those special programs fall into that. We talk about our multilingual education goal. We talk about our multilingual education goal and what we're talking about with that. We're talking about not allowing our, our underserved populations to not have equitable opportunities in our constraints. And so really wanna just kind of make sure-
Thank you Ashley.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
But that is what we're talking about.
It really is because we, we wanna make sure that students, you know, that every, like I've heard you say, like we want every campus to be strong, right? And so that means having conditions in place where kids can read by third grade, where they are, you know, achieving star. You know, they're passing the math star and all of that kind of stuff as well. It's, it is the special stuff, but it's also the basics. Like, you know, you almost have to look campus by campus and be like, what is the literacy rate at each of these campuses? And is there anything that we as a district are doing to suppress those numbers because of our special programming and our enrollment? And are we somehow inadvertently cutting off opportunities for some students to, so that others can get something that they, that's, that they want? That's a nice to have, but it's not a must have. It's not something that's in our scorecard. You know, and I almost feel like until we have every elementary school where the majority of kids are reading at grade level, like I almost feel like that needs to happen before we start talking about all the extras in the district. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there and just kind of see like, just inject that into the enrollment conversation.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is that having well-resourced neighborhood schools, right? So schools that are tied to an attendance boundary, right? I mean, cause not, um, have what's needed to meet the student population's needs, right? An example would be if we have a, a school and, and we, you know, look at where our students are on grade level and off grade level and we see that 35% or 40%, you know, are receiving tier two or tier three interventions, then you would need additional instructional coaches, right? So that would be a distribution of resources at that campus that's different than another campus that had a different, you know, pri- profile of on grade level and off grade level. And so in order to pay for that expense, right? Cause you want the, you want their res- their needs to be met at their home campus, right? And if our families are leaving because their needs are not being met at their home campus, that's what we have to address. And so the question becomes how do you free up the resources? And if you're gonna prioritize where those resources get deployed, you're gonna maybe take away some options in order to invest locally. And which is why when I first stated the problems, not the problem statement, but the statement in the beginning, I said neighborhood schools. It's come up over and over again in the LRP, 2017 bond is something we value. And I, I think that's maybe what I'm hearing trustee seeing, if not. Okay, no, I, 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 I understand that and I agree.
And that's gonna be like the heart that to me-
That's how you get one in early literacy, early numeracy. I mean, that, that's like-
Exactly. It's like, that's gonna be, I think, the really hard thing that we are gonna be, like, that's why the scorecard is, I think, really important in, in driving this. And so I, I just really appreciate having the space to talk about that. And, and like, when I look at the actual, thank you for getting this data together on the transfers in and out. And this is corroborating a lot of the things that I've been hearing, that I heard when we did our sessions. And also there are patterns that I see here that align with our taper data, you know? And so, yeah, it's kind of self-reinforcing and this is our opportunity to make some, some changes. So, thanks.
Can I, I'd love to follow up on that with just a, a financial question that if we're, if we think these consolidations, you said target roughly $30 million in kind of academically and moving toward our goals and instructional coaches and those resources we've talked about over and over and over again and supporting what we're doing, how meaningful is an investment of that size in that work?
Well-
Especially if it's concentrated in places.
Well, and I, and I think that's where we have to be really careful. Because as I was saying to trustee Foster earlier, you know, we can't afford what we have now, right? We just can't. And so we need to do enough that helps us bridge the deficit, the gap over time. And then also pay for the other things. I, I don't want our community or our board or anybody on our staff to, to feel as though, you know, these consolidations, just call them that, are going to fix all of it, right? There, there's still gonna be other things that have to be done, which is why we said steps, multiple steps in the process. I don't know if that was helpful, but I wanted to be-
It's helpful and I think just understanding that it partly goes to closing a deficit. And, and we're bridging, I think, the, you know, just to make it really clear with our community, right? That some of this will be available to invest in, in new things. And some of it is gonna help close our deficit. And, and we're, we adopted a larger deficit budget this year than we normally would have to bridge to this work, you know, to help us get to a place where we could make these cuts instead of cutting librarians, cutting things that we know have supported our students' success. So I just wanna, you know, the teacher planning time, all the things you've brought to us that say these things matter. And when we did our budget and you had the, the dots, you know, this said, this is a big impact, a medium impact, a small impact. Those things were listed and, and we taught, we had those choices. And that we're to this because we don't wanna cut those things, but this doesn't. It's not, we don't have $30 million brand new money to spend if, even if this happens. And I think it's really good to kind of understand how much of an impact this makes. But it's not a magic solution.
It's not a magic solution, but I, I also, there are compounding effects of just becoming a more, a healthier system. You know, and, and so, you know, what is it like when you have well-resourced schools? You know, like, like, you know, you would expect outcomes to move. Then all of a sudden, you know, our family's making different choices, you know? Are, do you see the, I mean, we'll do our work to control the transfers in a maybe a different, more meaningful way. But, you know, I don't wanna have a family to even have to think about choosing to leave their neighborhood school. You know, like that's, that's where we need to get. But there's gotta be a catalyst and I think that's what we're talking about here trustee Kitana. I don't, sorry, I know you had your hand up.
Yeah, at the risk of repeating what president Boswell and trustee seeing have already said, I agree with all of that. And, and my, I just wanted to ask, in my head, the way I think about it is we have a budget deficit and then we also have a deficit in these scorecard numbers, right? There's a disparity. And the way I see it is while we're going through this process, we're trying to bridge that deficit and we're trying to bridge these numbers. And when I think about consolidation, transfers, special programs, I just, I go back to those two things and I go back to this, right? Is like, how are spending money on X helping us with our third grade literacy? And how is that affecting our budget? So I think that as we continue to have these conversations and as y'all continue forward and you're planning, I think, and, and, and those are hard concession. I'm not saying like it's gonna be easy to be like, oh, well, we're not, we're just not gonna do this anymore that like thousands of families love to do, right? It, it's not, it's not, it's not gonna be easy. And I know that and I appreciate that. But I think that until our students in every school and every neighborhood on, in, on any side of town can leave their house and go to their zone school and be able to get what we need them to get, we, I think we're, we're gonna have to make those concessions. And I think that that is in lockstep with our values as a district and a board as well.
So I'm looking at the question that's on there in light of, well, what everybody's talking about. Tell me sort of philosophically inter, or sort of a, sort of theory of action around achieving student outcomes, especially and specifically for the groups that are profoundly underperforming. Are we better off having an integrated campus socio-economically, ethnically, religiously, et cetera? Especially socio-economically and ethnically? Or are we better off having a high concentration of a high needs population and then more resources there? What's the theory of action of the district around that?
I, I think that's, I mean, I can certainly respond, but I also think that's part of the board's conversation amongst each other. You know, I, I think that extremes in any case are unhealthy. You know, the research from consecrated schools about extreme poverty and abject poverty and, you know, the kind of resources that are required to move outcomes. You know, that's something that has to be acknowledged and something that we have to, to address head-on. But we also know that, you know, like integration, that's not what the goal here is. It's not to just move everybody around, right? To get to a certain percent. We, we know that there are vibrant, incredible communities in the city of Austin. They have their culture. We love that. We, we appreciate it. It makes us a better organization. And so I think it's a balance and that's why this conversation, this question is posed this way. It's not about getting to the mean. It's when you make a decision and students are being moved, do you wanna increase the percent of students that are identified as economic disadvantage in the campus? Or do you want to acknowledge that it's increased and maybe that's not the best strategy? You should look at maybe balancing it and moving it in the opposite direction, but knowing that getting to the mean is probably unlikely given where the percent is for maybe that particular school, like 85, right? So, so that's the way I, I, it's not about just, I mean, again, this is, this is the board conversation. I don't wanna take it over, but you asked me a question. And so that's, the theory of action is really meant to kind of be posed here because, you know, that's how I approach the work. Extremes in any direction are unhealthy. But also balanced is not possible or necessarily appropriate. I mean, so, you know, I don't know, but by the way to answer that trustee Foster, you, you probably do. Maybe that's like a professor and you telling me like.
Well, I guess I would, uh, since, since you're asking about theory of action, I, I do think there are, I don't wanna say magic, you know, it's not alchemy, but there's a reality that when you, we have balanced schools where the, the demographics of the school aren't at extremes, there, there's still challenges that come with that, right? There's challenges that always come with the diversity of a population where someone's, you know, accidentally neglected or, you know, there's challenges. But there's also profound opportunities and there's also the likelihood of reduced stress on the system when it's not just a huge number of kids all facing the same particular challenges. So, you know, when we say 44 schools have an 85% eco dis or higher, you know, that's, that's a pretty big alarm. And of course, it's something we see all over the place and we've always seen it. I do like and I do think our natural state would be a state of integration, but we run from it for all the reasons we've talked about. A parent says, I saw this campus. I didn't like what I saw, so I went somewhere else, et cetera. And so there's unringing of bells to be done around that. But I guess where I wanna really go is to say that I like and appreciate creating the balance that has a school be a healthy ecosystem. Where there's folks with, you know, privilege and there's folks with resources and there's folks with less and they're all kind of working together and the school isn't overly taxed in one direction or another. The challenge however, is that that magic state is not like a state that persists very long. Because as soon as a school becomes like, this is really cool and we've got that perfect balance, those with more power and privilege around the city go, oh, that place looks great. And all of a sudden they start coming in and those with less power and privilege start getting pushed to the side. And the very balance that we achieved and that everyone wants gets disrupted. You follow what I'm saying? And so I guess, and maybe there's not an answer for this, as we say here is the setup of a school that achieves the best outcomes for all, how do we then maintain that over time? Because experience tells us that it's like a fleeting moment. It's three years. And then all of a sudden the balance is gone again. And so it's like a cycle. And maybe it's us being completely corrective and having good policies like around transfers and sticking to them. But other than that, you know, how do we get our, get to our North Star configuration that serves our kids best, saves us the money, but then also have a system that helps us maintain it?
Yeah, I think, I think the, um, the maintaining part is, that's, that's our work in creating structures and, and expectations of the administration. Like, I mean, we haven't, you know, as an organization for better part of 10 years, I, I, I don't know that we've done a good job of controlling transfers or bringing revised methodologies to the board regarding boundaries. Or, you know, I mean, it's hard, like you said, I mean, changing boundaries is hard. And so I, I think we just have to get into a rhythm, you know, as the city changes, a- as we change, we're willing and able to create the space to make adjustments. But I also wanna be, like have a conversation here around what are the operational constraints of actually trying to get to whatever that, you know, quote, balance is, right? Which is why I say moving towards, not achieving. Cause when I look at the landscape of Austin ISD, within Austin, right? Folks live where they live, you know, and, and there's movement that could occur. But what are the costs and what are the like ramifications of that movement? You know, i.e. busing back, you know, there. So I just wanna be really sensitive to the fact that there, there is gonna be steps in the right direction. I'm not, I'm, I'm certain that you're, we can't get to total balance, right? Without doing something that maybe doesn't align with our values or what our community, you know, expects of Austin ISD. And so I think that's part of the conversation, you know? And, and we heard from our communities, you know, busing is not something we would ever do. And, and I, after working with the team and being kind of over this for a while now, I just don't want to kind of set that expectation because it, it's gonna take multiple steps, right? To, to get to where I think, closer to where we wanna be. I don't know if that's helpful. I probably said way too many words, but it's just, it's just difficult. I mean, it's honestly to get there.
No, that's, that's helpful.
I, I shouldn't be calling on people. I'm sorry.
You're the professor.
Yeah, this is, yeah, go ahead.
Well, so I, I just wanted to offer maybe a, a counterpoint or, or to balance on the other side of that. I think in a similar vein, at least when, when I've talked about the accountability scores and how I view that, I wonder if there's not space here for, you know, consideration of the investment that is indicated for, for the students in need when we're looking at migrating populations. You know, one of the things I heard you say was how much balance is possible if, if we were even doing this. And, and certainly there are communities that are naturally grouped together or, you know, anything like that. And, you know, along a similar line of like, you know, that we're not necessarily busing students somewhere. I wanna make sure that in this conversation, we're looking at an end result of wherever the student ends up going. If it's a student that needs more services or is, you know, you know, the, the investment that is implicated by any given student, you know, that it's tracking. And that also when we're considering where, you know, boundary changes or, you know, a- any, any of the transfer policy, that it's leading us towards being able to put that investment into the groups of students. So, you know, in, in one sense, you know, the, the cautionary warning, right? If those students get spread out, does that make it harder to actually address all the different needs? Because now they're kind of dispersed on campuses. They kind of get lost within the, the metrics of, of that other school. As opposed to investing in the campus where they are or, you know, allowing them to go to a campus that we are then able to put in the full investment. So just, you know, the balance between those two.
Yeah, trustee Deorius, and I think as complex as this is, we'll probably have both instances, right? And, and I think based on the boundaries that we've seen, there may be instances where, you know, the majority of students that need additional support end up going to one school because of geographically kind of where they live. So, you know, I, I just think there will be multiple instances. We have to think really, really closely and, and do the hard work of understanding, you know, if these students are moving to X school, you know, are we prepared, able to create a thoughtful, you know, like transition plan? plan that is mindful of the full student, you know, and supports the family, and then ultimately re-resourced that campus appropriately? I mean, and, and, you know, to kind of say this again, I said it a little while ago, you know, the disruptions are real, you know, the Title II, Title III, Title IV, I mean, like, this, we, you know, I just worry about, you know, not acknowledging, there are going to be future disruptions, right? And so I just want to be really clear about, you know, we absolutely need to and should be and will invest in a way that meets our students' needs, but we also don't have infinite resources. And I think that's why the hard work that we're talking about is so important, because we got, we got to do better. I mean, we just have to.
Yeah, and I, I think that's exactly along the lines that I'm thinking, is that as we do this work, is it setting us up for the future work? You know, do, do we have the structure in place that then we can try and continue to double down and triple down on those investments? So, I appreciate that.
So my alarm went off. I, I know we're, I don't know if there's any other, trying to keep rolling? President Boswell?
Yeah, let's keep going.
All right. Oh, sorry, did you have, trustee?
Do you have what you need from us?
Oh, yeah, that was helpful. Well, team?
Yeah, I think we're well timed to go to the next, there'll be, you'll see a lot of overlaps in discussion with our next topic.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, so one of the things, and I think this ties in well to what trustee Singh was just saying, what are the baseline offerings for schools, right? We cannot move outcomes, we cannot move our scorecard unless the vast majority of our schools have student outcomes improved. Well, the vast majority of our schools are neighborhood schools, and so we wanted to have a conversation around initially, well, you know, what do our baseline programming, our staff allocations, you know, how does that impact our, our scorecard? Well, I mean, honestly, this is one of those ones... Josh, if you could go to the next slide. It impacts, I mean, really every single thing that we do. I mean, it just does. You know, how many counselors do you have? Do you have instructional coach, content interventionist, the number of assistant principals? I mean, you know, the, do you have, you know, yeah, PTA, that's not, we partner, but yes, a hundred percent, pre-K, you know, like, everything is tied to the offerings that we have at our campuses. We are not consistent across our district. When you think about, you know, some of the documents that we have in the back, you'll see that we have all sorts of programs all over the district, and we are desperately trying to add resources, but we can't add them everywhere. You know, a great example of that is, you know, instructional coaches I just mentioned, you know, two years ago, we had to fund them using Title I dollars, and we were never even able to get them everywhere. We could only get them in Title I schools even since that's had been scaled back. Content interventionists, we had to pass the tax rate election to get them introduced into our campuses, which is a huge, huge benefit to our, our system, our students, but we didn't have them before. Like, you know, like, what's foundational? Like, what are we going to agree to for our campuses? And that is, like, hell or hot water, we're going to provide it. That's what we need to come to consensus on. So I wanted to have a conversation around, you know, these things that we talk about when we go into our schools from our trustees' perspectives, based on input from the community. Like, what should a school have? And, you know, we, when we talk to community, it's, it's not about the, necessarily just the, the staff, it's like, how does it feel? Like, you know, you know, what does the engagement look like, the welcoming? And I know it gets a little softer, but at the end of the day, you know, those types of descriptions help us identify what resources on the campus help promote that, right? And so the question is, what should a school look, sound, and feel like in Austin ISD? And if a family comes to an elementary school, middle school, or high school, they can expect to have X. You know, just kind of an open conversation. We have lots of schools that are doing lots of things, but to your point, trustee Singh, that neighborhood school, that elementary school, what should it have? What should it feel like? So, yeah, that's where we need input.
And I want to echo our community and bring their voice back into it. What we heard from them is they don't want homogenistic. They do want baseline. They like the specialty things, right, but they don't want a homogeneous Austin ISD. So, but they do notice that there are different schools that offer different things, but what is our baseline? Maybe we have it. Maybe Austin ISD has a baseline. Maybe TEA has a baseline. We just need to be more open to defining what that is and communicating what that is.
I have a question about kind of tying our academics to the long-range plan, because I think that has some suggestions for us that are based on prior work that was adopted before we had our scorecard, but do we feel like that work reinforces, do you think it aligns with your understanding of what's going to get us where we need to be?
Oh, you know, one of the things that I think put us in a really good position is that all this great work had been done not too long ago with our community in the development of the long-range plan. And so there are many things that we've actually already talked about, you know, including the transfer policies and kind of goals for utilization that came out of that work. Some of the programming and the access to programming is also included in the LRP, you know, hub-and-spoke model. So I don't know, Dr. Friendship, is either you want to add to it? But absolutely.
Yeah, and if it's not, it's a digital link only, but we have our baseline report from the long-range plan, and that directly and explicitly links those goals and recommendations to the scorecard. And so we make those direct links. We would love as much as to layer that, because it is, it was such an investment the community made, so however possible that we can look back to that. I will say in regards to baseline programming, there's a clear mandate that we need to have it. There's a lot of work to do to actually define it. I don't, it doesn't give us a guidebook of what that specifically looks like, but more gives us the mandate of kind of the outcomes that are expected. And so we do have our work to do over the next, you know, year to really come up with that, and this, this is our, you know, we started with the community, and we need to start with you all.
And I want to share appreciation of taking the LRP's work and marrying it, because I do think that's really valuable. Thank you.
So I do have some thoughts on this, if that's what you're kind of asking about. So I think, I think having something, I, so it's kind of a couple of things in mind, a couple of things come to mind. Some of it is staffing, but it's not just like, okay, everyone's going to have an assistant principal or this and that, like, that's kind of a given, but, but I do, I am glad it's there, but it's kind of like, okay, what are the research-based levers for success that we know exist out there? So it's like high-quality teachers or like how we, however we define that. It's looking at our own data and saying, well, where do we see reading scores go up? And I just think about Pickle Elementary and how they've had a six-hundred percent increase in second graders who are, who have made expected growth on their reading map. Can't wait to see what their star, star scores are going to look like when they're in third grade, but it's like, okay, so does, so that would be another one, is like, does every, is every early elementary teacher, elementary teacher really trained in and implementing the signs of reading? You know, is every kid reading real literature? You know, I, I don't think we need to, like, necessarily think about, like, going to huge levels of detail for every subject area, but for the ones that we have named on our scorecard, it's a pretty short list. So I think maybe if there's, and one, I don't think it should come necessarily from the board. I think it should come from our staff who know what the levers of success are based on their research and the data. I think, you know, if it comes to the staff, to us to approve, that's great, but like, I would be looking at the subject matter experts, I just kind of name what I thought, you know, from what I've heard. But, but, yeah, I would say like for numeracy and, and reading, like, I would want some detail on like actual things that we would expect to see happening in the classroom, you know? And I would also hope to see things like, you know, that reflect the culture of students, because we know, again, you know, students feel safe, like they belong, you know, that is something that's a huge predictor of student academic success in terms of, you know, like, you can even look to our constraints, and we have actually named some things in our constraints, like, does every elementary school have a family engagement goal in their campus improvement plan? Like, so that would be in there as well. So I think we have a lot of the documents. It's just a matter of like curating what those conditions are, those factors are, and picking the ones that are most closely aligned to what we've already identified in our scorecard. So it doesn't have to be this huge, long laundry list, but it could be like a somewhat short list that has like key things that we know we care about.
And I think it's important to acknowledge that there are going to be things that we believe are, should be baseline, but we currently don't do or don't do across the district. I mean, and I think that's kind of, you talk about steps, I mean, the goal is to get to be able to do it everywhere, you know, in, in the way that meets our student needs, students' needs, but, so, yeah, we, we definitely have those thoughts. I mean, there's, what we're going to find is there are going to be a lot of things, and they're probably going to exceed our current allocations, but the, the purpose of the task is to figure out, okay, well, if you want, if, we have to have better well-resourced school, we have to have more well-resourced schools, then this is what a well-resourced school looks like. This is what our families would expect when they go into one of our schools. So, so that's kind of part of the conversation. So I appreciate that. We can definitely, you know, build that out, but it's going to require then probably a couple more conversations with the board.
I think it would be really helpful, like, I don't know, like, what the timeline is. I heard you say a year, you know, but I think, I know we're voting on this in November, like, on the final list of schools. I think it would be really helpful to have some sense of what even would be on that before then, because that's, for me, that's like a huge factor in making decisions. And in fact, out of all the ones we've talked about so far, this is kind of like the most important one for me personally. And so I think that it would be really helpful to, even if the work is not complete, at least we know we're well underway, would be really helpful.
That's okay. I, I was just going to say, trustee Singh, the, the vote in November is, you know, about boundaries, you know, consolidations, you know, transition plans, and so I think we can certainly build it out and get pretty far along in the process, but I, I think what I'm worried about is the fact that we are starting kind of below water, like, trying to get to, you know, kind of be balanced. And a lot of why we have that deficit is, is because, you know, we chose to invest in teachers, and we chose to do things that we could have otherwise not done, like, you know, we could have pursued some out of eight, we could have chosen to go a different way with librarians, but, so I, I just, I'm going to try to figure out a way to show it all, do the work, and then talk about, okay, you know, this is where we can expect to be kind of at this point, this point, and this point. I just worry about making sure we're on the same page. I don't, I don't want to get to a vote and then the assumption be that we can immediately get there, like, the following year, because there's going to be things in there that are going to be just honestly very difficult to, to be able to, you know, resource. I mean, I, I'm expecting all title dollars to go away, right? And I'm expecting, like, everything that's been the worst has happened effectively. So it's just, I, I, you know, so I think we define it, we agree, and then we talk about how we get there, but I just, I, I hope that the vote is not kind of in exchange for like that commitment.
No, but, but what I think it does help do is, because we know the vote's going to probably be a little hard, you know? It's not going to be an easy vote, but I think the more clearly we can define why we're doing this, like, that's, that's, that's really the only thing we have. Like, yeah, we're doing this to save money, but we're doing this at the same time as, trustee Quintana was saying, like, we've got deficits in our budget, we've got deficits in our scorecard, so we're trying to fill both of them, and we, we have the numbers really clear. We don't have this baseline academic vision of how we're going to, you know, move the needle on the scorecard. And so that's why, it doesn't have to be all, like, in my opinion, I don't think every detail needs to be in there, but we've got to just show, like, that this is the why, and really help our community understand, like, we've got to do this for the whole. It's not about my campus or your campus, it's all of us. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what trustee Singh was saying, like, it does seem to be, like, if I'm going to feel secure walking into this process, I need to, I guess, know as much as I possibly can of what is it that I'm walking into on the other side? Like, what is, what is this for? What's, what are we exchanging for? And so along the lines that she was speaking of, I thought about staffing and how if we're in a limited budget, the money that we use to incentivize staff, I think about the distribution of where nationally board-certified teachers are. If we think that that's something that makes a difference in improving outcomes for students, then how is that articulated in the new vision that we're walking into? The same thing with the strategic middle school staffing that we just undertook in those three campuses, the additional dollars that were allocated, and also like the level of experience that was required. If that is something that we believe is going to move student outcomes, then is that part of what should be articulated on the other side, like, what we're walking into? And the distribution of programming and the purpose of where additional investments are made and why that go beyond kind of the minimum expectation that trustee Singh was talking about, that we make investments in at the expense of providing what is baseline in other communities? So those are, I guess, three different areas that came up for me as she was speaking.
A couple of things. I think it would be really helpful as we move forward with this for our community and for our board to define what is baseline for the state of Texas academically and kind of what the basics are that we owe under the foundation school program. I think that would be a really good starting point for just understanding where the floor is, right? And then having a sense of what we do that's more, and I know we have some of that, but I think that being able to look at those side by side will be really helpful for that understanding. And then I also am really intrigued by what you're showing here, like CTE hub-and-spoke model, and I know advanced courses, and the idea, I've, I've heard you talk about the idea of, do we want fewer early college high schools with a bigger concentration of students in locations that happen to be closer to ACC campuses to, to make it easier for students to have access to that or have access to that in a way that's done in other communities? And so I'd really love your thoughts about, as we're talking about this, both in terms of expanding access and alignment with, with those CCA mark goals and finding financial efficiency that lets us do more, whether CTE hubs might be helpful. I know Clifton's making an investment that has land, and whether doing early college high schools differently and, and using it to do access differently maybe better is something that you think would be beneficial and something that we might think about.
Yeah, so certainly on the CTE hub, you know, hub-and-spoke model, and for those following along, you know, in the LRP, and it's, it's a practice in many school districts and one that I think is a good one when you get to a school district of our size. It's recognition that the costs associated and the challenges of staffing, kind of those specific programs are hard to maintain across every high school, right? And so the, the way to, to kind of mitigate those expenses and also provide access is to create, you know, a hub-and-spoke model where, you know, the curriculum tied to the program in ninth and 10th grade are taken at the local campus, the, you know, the traditional comprehensive high school, wherever it may be, and then the junior and senior year, when they require more hands-on, they require, you know, just a different experience, then they get, or they have access to the hub, right? And Clifton certainly is like that, becoming that. Other programs like Culinary at Travis Early College High School, you know, there's kind of that element of it as well, where many seats are local, but others can access it, but not necessarily until they're ninth or 10th, I mean, to our 10th and 11th grade. And so I, that was a recommendation out of the LRP. It is something that I believe strongly could be a path forward for us and, and something that I think could help create redundancies in the system. I think we need to have a hard look also at those programs. You know, we have lots of different offerings. I understand why we have them, but what are the implications of a certain offering in a certain part of town? And I'm not going to, going to speak to different offerings and why they exist or how they got there, but, you know, I think there's something to be said, is, you know, why are certain programs only in certain parts of town? You know, and then the other thing that I would say is, early college high school, you know, it's a program that... it's a program that, you know, we leaned into heavily, you know, many years ago. You go to other urban school districts or other school districts, and they have fewer than we have. It's a proportion of the total student body. And they are, the early college high school, they're, they attract students, they are strong. They, you know, represent a certain student experience. And because of the number that we have and where they're located, I wonder if we've kind of diluted perhaps that program as its district. You know, we've never tackled that, you know? I think it's something that should be tackled. From the board's perspective, you know, should it be tackled? You know, I, I think that's just one of those things. Again, it's, it's been in place. Proximity to Austin Community College is a huge benefit for those early college high schools that have it. And those that don't, like, you know, what is their experience? And then when you think about, well, the number of students that are actually leaving with an associate's degree or the number of students that are receiving credit hours, you know, look at where that's occurring across the city in Austin ISD, and, you know, it's different. So, yeah, that's, that's my position on it. I, I know, we're, we're doing this work together, so it's not just Matthias. There's a lot of us working together, but those have been my observations. I don't know if that's helpful or...
That is helpful. And I, I would love, I think when we fill in that blank, they can expect to have, when we talk about a high school, it doesn't necessarily mean what you expect to have on your local campus, but what you expect to have x meaningful access to is when we get to high school and, and moving students. I mean, I don't think we would ever put elementary school students on a bus and send them across town in the middle of the school day for part of the day, but at high school, it's a, we have, we've been doing that, right? A lot of other places do that successfully. So I think I would love to explore that at our high schools for, for increased access and to really serve the promises we're making and the, the goals we have for our students and for efficiency. And I think, you know, we've talked a lot about tracking and who has access to what and why and where programs have landed, you know, and, and this is for you over here and this is for you over here, and, and whether that's a way to help really offer broader access to all of it.
One of the things that we might consider, or the administration may consider and then bring forward is, you know, maybe think about baseline for a comprehensive high school. And we know, we, we do value tailoring programming to the community, but, you know, there has to be some, like, bound to it. It, it can't just be endless. And we do have schools that have lots of different types of programs. And sometimes we've seen students get abandoned in the middle of a program because, you know, an educator transitions away or the grant runs out with the partner. I mean, that happens now. And so we don't want that. Like, that's, that's what, we want to avoid that at all costs, but when you have smaller programs that kind of butt up and are localized and not funded centrally or supported centrally, then you see a lot of that. So I think as we go through the process, we need to really think about, this is what we expect and we, we believe our students deserve. This is what we can support and provide this amount of autonomy. So anyway, no, I, I agree with you, and that's just another thought that I wanted to share.
Thank you. And then I think with a similar kind of both and as we're looking at this, especially at our secondary campuses, and I do think this really ties into our access to, to secondary, to opportunities after high school, right? And especially to university and college opportunities after high school. When we talk about arts or athletics, you know, that, that every school should have a band and a, you know, kind of the basics. And, you know, when we talk about those options too, we see a lot of our schools leaning into guitar or mariachi or something. And so how do we have kind of a both and where we have the real fundamentals and some local choices? And I know our LRP really looked into that with the viability and had a lot to say about that, but I, I really think that balancing, you know, the, the core and the local.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's, it's something to be discussed, you know? You know, is it, is it okay to, you know, to acknowledge that some schools may not want or, or, you know, need a certain program? Like, I think sometimes, you know, it's not that we force programs, but, you know, there are, the copyrights of high school is going to have this sport, this sport, this sport, this thing, this thing, this thing. And then you realize that the school community really wants this other thing. Or if there's a, a program, a unique program, and they have a certain, you know, athletic or fine arts program tied to the school, but it's just, it's really kind of struggling because of just how the school is, is built from a student population perspective, you know, like, does it make sense to continue on? Or is it just like, hey, if you come to the school, this is just, you know, what the offering is going to be? It's not a comprehensive high school in the way that the other neighborhood, you know, attendance-bound, boundary schools are. So there's, there's a lot to be kind of, I guess, discussed there. But it's not lost to me that different schools need different things, but, you know, we just need to figure out kind of where the, where as an organization, we need to be in that conversation. So it's delicate, that's for sure, as you can probably tell the way I'm responding to it.
I, I appreciate you raising, so early college high schools just proliferated in this town in a specific moment, under a specific leadership, and in a way that mapped most precisely to east-west divide. So it's hard to make a claim that this was about what's best for this or best for that, except for where the notion that our sense of what was best was that if you live on this side of town, we're going to lean towards the vocational. And if you live on this side of town, we're going to lean towards advanced academic opportunity. And there is, in my book, absolutely a place for the early college high school concept in the context of college, career, military readiness. And I, I just want to, I guess, double down, this is the first time I've heard an administrator kind of say this, that we might have diluted, we might have done, gone a little bit too big. And not only did we go too big, we went only on one side of town. It was a rigid segregate, segregatory, it was, it was, it was segregated programming that was naked from the start. And the challenge that comes with that is that some of the things sound really, really cool. And so it's like, hey, culinary, yeah, you can see, like, that sounds great. And, but what got hidden was the trade-off. And then what also got hidden barely was the fact that we were doing it here and doing something else there. And for me, that's another one of the things that really needs to be profoundly rethought if what we're interested in, in terms of our student outcomes, also is equity and an equity in excellence and opportunity. So if part of the process means we think about where and why and how for an ECHS, and we pin it to something like an ACC campus right there that does certain things, and this just makes sense. Or, you know, there's some reason and logic that just makes it economical, efficient, and excellent for students, then I'm, I'm kind of in. So I guess I see an opportunity there, and I, I think that's the door that you opened by mentioning this reality of, on one hand, it's dilution, but it's also, it's segregated programming. And we really should look at that.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. It's the type of feedback that we need to understand, like, how to best move forward.
Just a real quick thought to kind of tag on is, in that, you know, for baseline expectations, I think the one thing maybe that I would add in here is the kind of fidelity and service quality aspect of it, that when we're making these, we're considering that we're, you know, maximally confident in the delivery of, of what we're saying that baseline is. And, you know, going along with our, you know, staffing as an example and making sure that we're staffing appropriately so that staff is not overworked for whatever the, the delivery is that they're responsible for, particularly with like specialized programming, special ed, dyslexia services, those type of things. And so I think that's the, the other kind of X, Y, Z axis on this is regardless of, of what our minimums are, that we're making sure that we're going to really confidently deliver on that. And so like the idea of diluting a service by offering it too much, as an example.
Yeah, I, I think that was well said. I mean, I, I think that there was a, a term that was used in Austin, I've seen that too long ago, have it all. And I think that, you know, we're just not at a place. And when we attempt to do that, we dilute ourselves, we become inch-deep or mile-wide. And, you know, access is important, you know, opportunity is important. But to, to try to do that, I think does exactly the opposite of what you're describing, right? If we're going to do something, let's do it well. And so I think whatever we propose, we should be able to communicate how we're going to be able to staff and resource and not, you know, hope for some future funding source or for some student, some population of professionals that doesn't currently exist in our area, like, it can't be that. And, you know, this is something to think about. I think about it a lot, but I appreciate the comment. All right, continuing on, trustee Kaufman.
I just want to weigh in on the side of making sure that every elementary, middle, and high school has the support for students to learn how to read and do math. I just think, again, as we're considering resource allocations and what we can and cannot do, I just think that has to be the fundamental baseline for everything. And I don't ever, I don't believe that teaching all students to read and do math requires doing nothing else, right? I think that it does require other things that make school an enjoyable experience for them, that builds on their strengths, that attacks it from different ways of learning. But, you know, when I, when I hear the stories of kids who aren't successfully reading after fifth grade or after eighth grade or into graduation, that, that's, you know, that's the baseline that we have to have at every school, meaning that there are reading, people who know how to teach reading and the support and the resources to do it at, at middle schools and at high schools in addition to making sure we're doing it. So, anyhow, I just think that, to me, is the number one baseline. When I look at the bullets here, though, I wonder, I just want to distinguish again, we are not going to achieve economically balanced schools anytime in the near future. And so I do think that the inputs are going to have to vary. So when I look at this list, what, if a family comes to school, I don't, I'm not concerned whether a family expects to have instructional coach or not, right? Like, because that instructional coach is an input to ensure that the teachers are able to provide the instruction necessary for the kids to succeed. So that's one where I say, like, I, I would just put that into like an input rather than a, like, what the students are experiencing. If that makes sense.
Yeah, well, that's why I put it, so, so I, so to your point, right? Every student, early literacy, you know, making sure that our educators are getting what they need to serve our students. Sorry, thought it went off. The reason I put instructional coaches up there is because right now, we're having to negotiate against each, ourselves about where we can keep instructional coaches. And so right now, we barely have them at Title I schools, and that, those dollars are going away. And so what we're saying is, if we agree that baseline staffing at our elementary schools to support early literacy, early numeracy, and to support, you know, the professional educators in, in our schools is our baseline, then we need to be able to budget for it and be able to afford it. And this thing is saying is true of instructional coaches. Now, there's different ratios you can use and different movements, but, you know, because I, I don't assume that we'll have instructional coaches. I, I, I want to. I believe that they have done an incredible job and they're very valuable to our system, but they're tied to Title I dollars, and, and those are going away. So that, that's why, for me, it's really important to define what it is, because at the end of the day, whatever is defined should be paid for out of general operating budget. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, oh, yeah. So I 100% agree, and that goes back again to the administration really developing and understanding a literacy plan, like, really knowing that we have a comprehensive literacy plan that when we do have to make tough calls and say, you know what, well, we can't afford to do this anymore because if we're going to achieve 100% of our kids being able to read, whichever level they're at, right? We never give up. I, the nonsense about if a kid doesn't learn to read by the end of third grade, it's too late. Like, no, it's never too late. You can teach an adult how to read. So we have to invest at every single level in ensuring that there's not a single kid, no matter what point they entered our district or what point they're leaving our district, that they learned how to read. So when we have a comprehensive literacy plan, that will tell us a lot about what we can and can't afford on other areas. And so I just want to say, like, that I fully support maybe of developing a plan that would include what is the relative value of an instructional coach, right? But if we have to choose ultimately between an instructional coach and an underwater basket weaving course, right? I'm going to choose the instructional coach, if that's what you're telling us you need to get the kids to read, right? And so, and of course, that's a silly example, but like, those are going to be really hard choices, right? Are we going to have golf at this campus? Are we going to have water polo at this campus? Are we going to have ballet, folklorico at this campus? If it comes down to resource allocations, when we know clearly by choosing this, you are choosing not to have whatever, the instructional coach needed, the resources needed, then that's going to make our choices easier, right? So I just want to reinforce, like, the, what the parent, that the family should expect is that their kids are going to learn how to read and do math, no matter how much money they make and how much they pay for outside tutors and companies to pay, you know, right? That should not be the factor. So what the family should expect, right? And then a separate question is then, in order to achieve that, what, you know, do we need some of these things? So, anyhow, but I think it's a great, I think these are great questions, but I just want to reiterate again. I firmly believe in all the extracurriculars. I firmly believe that our kids should have multiple opportunities to do different things. I firmly understand that different communities are going to value different things. And I also already in advance feel the pain of knowing we're going to have to not do everything that we've done before. So I just want to, my main point is, I support the very first thing that families should expect is the fundamental academic instruction.
And before, before we move on, I just want to thank you for that, trustee Kaufman, and just remind everyone that we do have that feedback form linked as part of this. And I would love for you all to share these kind of thoughts in that forum and get that specific, like, that is what it is for, because I know we can't get through everything in this forum, so I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of that. And, and please give us kind of that level of detail in all of your responses to all four of the questions.
I think we're segueing into specialized programming, because we were talking about early college high schools. And so we have some other examples that we really need your feedback on. And so we'll kind of go to that. If you can go to the next slide, Josh. And these are just those attachments that are relevant to the specialized programming. Next slide. And superintendent Segura, if you want to intro the scorecard.
I will certainly. If you go to the next slide, please. So there's a document in our, online and in our binders here that lists every program in Austin ISD. And there are things that get included as programs, there are things that are not programs that are just, you know, standard practice that we should be doing. And they sometimes get all mingled up, and, and, so I want to be really clear about what we're calling a program, what we're not calling a program. You know, we have different types in Austin ISD. We have admission-based programs. They're defined in our policy. They include magnets, fine art academies, fine arts academies, P-Tecs, the Ivy Program. And then we have what we call in our policy, special interest programming. Again, kind of back to language that exists in Austin ISD already. Waldo-Waldo language, Montessori program, single gender STEM, early college high schools, we just talked about those.
Next slide.
Non-zoned schools. An example of a non-zone school would be a garza. We have CTE, digital media, non-application of, of fine arts programs, and the list goes on and on and on and on and on. And so there are maps in the LRP that identify kind of what programs exist in each school. The question today is not about, you know, what exists where and, and, you know, what should be where. It is, it is really trying to kind of, just kind of take a deeper dive into specialized programming. You know, those programs that are, are not tied to a comprehensive, maybe what we would think is a traditional comprehensive school. You know, and if you go to the next slide, oh, there it is, right there. So are programs still serving their original intent, right? These programs, as, you know, some of them are decades old, they've been around. You know, what was the original intent? Sometimes we, when we look back at, and trustee Gonzalez actually has requested this from us, which is a narrative around kind of each of the programs and how they started and where they're going. We haven't been able to complete that because there's some research involved. But, you know, some of these programs were introduced to attract students to that part of the city. Some of these programs were done to offset another program elsewhere in the city. You know, are we offering the programs in the right places? You know, there's, the city has grown, the, we have changed, and... You know, there's, the city has grown, the, we have changed, and we continue to think as programs fix to buildings, and that's not true. Programs can move. They absolutely can move. We've never really thought about it in that way, but as we go through the work, we want to understand from our trustees, is that, you know, something that should be explored? We believe that it should, but I definitely want to kind of create a conversation around that. I know that we've been going long a little bit, so I don't know how much time, where are we on now?
The time counts.
Okay. So, yes, we've, we've exceeded my little three hours, but obviously, we did this in a way to probably have it count, but I just wanted to get a quick time check. So, yeah, wanted to open it up to the trustees regarding our programs still serving their original intent. Each of y'all have programs in y'all's districts. Certainly, the at-large is no, you know, kind of all, where they exist within the ISD. And then, you know, based on what you've heard from community, are we offering programs in right places? Are they accessible, are they not? You know, again, there are lots of different types. And I can offer a couple, we can talk about, so this is kind of going maybe counter, so we just had a conversation around having neighborhood schools being fully resourced. These would be, if a school is, if it's a larger program tied to a campus, then it would not be one of those. But then we also have campuses that have programs within it. And so just as we're having the conversation, please, you know, differentiate the two so we can kind of clearly hear what you're saying.
And I would love, just, this is such a big diverse, mixed bucket, which is, I mean, it's really awesome to see all the things we're doing, and it's very exciting, and there's a lot more richness, you know, than I think we might assume as, you know, by stereotype of neighborhood. And, I mean, it's really rich in a lot of places in a lot of ways, but I also think to look at advanced manufacturing and marathon kids, like, are so different. Like, marathon kids cost nothing, I think, and every kid at a campus participates, pretty much. So I would love to know kind of how many kids are participating and what we think the cost of a program is to, as we're really getting down to making really hard choices, having more information, so we have something to choose by. And I don't know how plausible that is, but it's mainly something, if, if we're gonna have to make these hard choices, and as you bring recommendations to us, that, you know, in addition to the scorecard piece of it, just the, that piece of it might be really valuable to me to help know the impact it's having on students.
Yeah, and this is where it gets really difficult to map, when you think about the, the staff deployed to support programs and how they get distributed across multiple programs, or kind of how the funding comes, is it grant, is it our contribution, is it a split? So, you know, I, I am certainly willing and, and will do whatever I can to provide that level of information. I just don't want to assume that it'll exist in that same level of detail across all programs.
That's fine, and if you don't think it's, you know, valuable, I also underst, or not workable.
Valuable, I think it's fine.
If it's not workable, too, I understand, like, you understand the work that would need, but I think it's hard for me to answer, to some degree, with such a mix.
There's a lot happening in Austin ISD, that's for sure. Well, so, I mean, maybe those programs that you know. I mean, you know, you get into the weeds of, any, these, those, any one of these schools, there's a lot happening, but we can talk about the larger programs. We can talk about, you know, I've heard different things from different trustees over the years, and so I, I thought it might be a kind of a good starting point to open it up, but I can certainly offer different types of programs if it's helpful.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, it's, it is kind of, I mean, it's, this is a, this is, there's so many different things going on here, and to Trustee Boswell's point, it actually highlights what makes this special, and what makes our economies of scale and the, the size of the district special. It allows for complexity to meet needs. And if the question has to do about going, sort of going in and how to look at these, there are some things that we do, that our district does, that are not cost-efficient or whatever, that absolutely match the values of our community and our vision as a board, and that also sometimes map directly to our student outcomes, but in other ways, they're just things that serve our students well. So if we have a space that serves medically fragile students, and does it, you know, with excellence, and with care, and with love, and it costs a group of money, we do it. And if we have a space where students who aren't having the greatest experience as ninth graders or 10th graders on their home campuses, and there is an alternative space that serves them excellently, and sees them through to graduation, and it's not cost-efficient or cost-effective in tradition, by traditional metrics, but we do it, those things that map onto our values and that serve our students well, I would always want to see those protected. And it's, it's gonna get tough if you've got 150 of these different things, and they're all in different categories, you know, because at some point, there's gonna be a line, and there's absolutely, I can imagine, and I know, things that serve students well, and they might not, you know, make the cut, and, and that's when, I guess, it'll get tough. But I do know from, for me, without necessarily naming them all right now, you know, I can name a dozen things that there's no way that we could consolidate our way out of doing and have it be acceptable, you know? So I'm here for the prioritization, you know, and I'm here for, what's the smile?
I, I just, you know, no, I, that's, everything, everything on this list has an impact to, I mean, it's on the list for the reason, you know, for a reason. I, I think you're just, and so I don't, I want to understand, like, so I hate, I hate to use the word cost of, I mean, this whole effort, everything we're doing, we just gotta be able to pay for what we want to do, right? I think at the end of the day, I think that, you know, programs, programs campus by campus by themselves don't necessarily move the needle, right? It's just the buildup and the support and the, the cost at scale that ends up kind of being, so maybe it's better to bucket them. Maybe we say, you know, these types of programs are harder for us to support administratively because of the cost, but these other types are not, are easier. There, there are so many, and they've been growing and growing and growing, they're everywhere, you know? And so, and then it's also important to know, you know, maybe when you shoot me an email about, you know, that direct feedback, you know, which ones do you believe, from, from what you've heard from your community, are, are the ones that, you know, really have an impact on the students, and for you would be like the last ones you'd ever want to, you know? Because the thing is, they're, they're not all the same geographically, right? And so it's just, it's just, it's so nebulous.
So I, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the transparency and the sort of questing for inclusion and questing for input, and I always want to be careful that we don't fall into ward-and-power politics. You know, that, like, if I hit you up the most and the most effectively and the loudest, and I rally some folks, da-da-da-da, I would want to absolutely avoid that. And so if we, from a vision standpoint, can help you with guidelines, and then you can go back and say, well, according to these guidelines, here's a prioritization, and then we sort of follow that chain of logic to make some decisions, I would, I guess, appreciate, and as painful as it would be, because I know we're gonna get into things that I love, I would be kind of here for that tough conversation, and it would include the input of each of us as individuals and our community members, but it wouldn't be led by the ward politics, because that's not who we are as a board, anyway. But that's a national, that's a model, right, of how boards operate? It's like, who's the loudest, who's jockeying the most, and we don't want to do that.
No, no, I, I wasn't suggesting that would be the case. You know, I've known, that's not how you roll. So, no, I, I just, you know, kind of leaning into that, you know, you, you all hear from our community. I mean, you know, the community that you represent shares with you things that I don't get to hear. And so if there are things that, that, you know, your community, the community that we all support says that they value this program, I would want to know that, you know? Not because I'm gonna put that on top of the list or the bottom of the list, it's because it's helpful to understand. Helps us understand where to explore, so for that purpose. But if you don't have to, it's fine.
And I, I mean, I think it's worthy of clar, for clarification, because we, I think, and I'm proud of this, that we function a little bit differently, and it could be misconstrued. This, this has to do with jockeying and arguing for your thing.
No, that's fair.
It's not that. It's, it's, you're requesting input from us and from our entire community, so that we can apply that. Well, we have our vision, we get the input, we have a rubric, we go from there in a, in a logical way that, that produces equity and outcome.
And I think guidelines or conversation around kind of the framework for how to tackle that would be useful input, because if you have a really small program that is costly, but from an equitable perspective, the investment per student warrants it, well, how extreme does that get before it becomes, you know, not in balance with everything else that you're doing in the system, right? And I think we, that's just a conversation that, that we have to explore, and it's gonna be challenging.
And if I may, just, so we have an understanding of kind of where we're at in terms of decision-making for consolidations. There are some of these discussions that have a much longer runway for us to work through and talk about, because programs can move and they don't require as specialized of spaces. And so we'll have wiggle room in the future to keep these conversations going. But what we do need some guidance on, whether it be here right now or in your feedback form, are any implications on changing if a program that is at a zone school maybe would better serve our students or meet its original intent if it no longer had a zone? Because what that will do will fundamentally change the way we go about our boundaries. And so if there are any things that you, things you'd want us to look at, or guiding principles to decide if a school should share with a neighborhood zone or be a opt-in, choice school, we need to hear that now. Like, now is the time to make those changes, to be part of this comprehensive approach that we're taking. So I just, and that really aligns with, and that would be if it's to serve its original intent better, or if it's maybe not supporting the students where they're at, where the program needs to be served. So we've heard a lot of feedback regarding our wall-to-wall dual-language programs, that come, came up in every community workshop, so that specifically is one that we would love thoughts on how to, how you would like to see those programs move forward, as well as we've already touched on the early college. I would say our Montessori is also something our community has brought up a lot, that we will have to make decisions about as part of this effort, in how it aligns with our philosophical values and where we want to be as a district, and how we want to support those programs. So if we, if you want to focus efforts there, that would be appreciated, because those are the very timely decisions that we're having to make right now that will impact our work.
Thank you, and I'm trading some texts with Ashley. Okay, I think, I just saw, her pivot is taking us in a better direction, so thank you for that. And that it might be possible to have this conversation, especially because you're specifically asking about it, and have these specific minutes, not count as student outcome minutes, but still, because you're asking for us, we need to honor that. So I just wanted to share what I'm hearing. And then I also just want to toss in kind of another X-factor, which is, when I look at this list, this is what sets our public district apart. This is what sets us apart from charters, that's what sets us apart from a lot of privates. This is why people choose us in a lot of ways, in addition to all the other things. And, and talk about cutting this, we're talking about giving people reasons to leave sometimes, and just, I, you know, I don't know how we build that in, and we obviously have to, we've adopted our goals, because we have to get academics right above all. But, but to what degree can we make it both and? We can't make it both and everything, but how can we make it both and things that our community is seeking for in addition to the other? Thank you.
I think this is really the time that you can think about things really differently, and I know that's hard, right? When you think about what we've, what we've always done and how it's always been, and that kind of segues us into our next conversation. I know we talk about programming, but we're also talking about different school models. So we can do different things in different locations and have them with different grades. I mean, Montessori is a good example of what they do, that, what they do there, but just talking through, like, there can be some hybrid options of things. And so I just wanted to throw that out there into the space to get your brains working about thinking differently.
So I don't know that I have a completely coherent response. You know, one of the things, rewinding just a bit, I know, one thing that stuck with, that's coming up for me that Ms. Steenport had said, is that, you know, a lot of the community feedback, and I, I think I've heard the same, is that, you know, they don't want a homogeneous model. So, you know, as far as like baseline programming, it's, it's not necessarily the same thing. But also, when you take into account the accountability lens as far as framing it as investment that's needed, that's also not homogeneous across the district. And, you know, so not, you know, different areas of town, different campuses don't need the same programming, don't need the same level of investment, because the population is somewhat different. So when we are asking, are the programs still serving their original intent? Because there is a diversity of programmings, there's lots of disparate intents for those different programmings, and I wonder how we can pull that back, you know, to those goals and those constraints, and saying, you know, as Dr. Kaufman was saying, are, you know, for the minimums, are we serving those students with reading and math and those, those really core, basic competencies? And so when we're looking at this specialized programming, I wonder if that's not a fruitful lens to look at how that's tying into the diversity of the ways that we're serving those students with those outcomes, and also balancing it, you know, since we are talking about consolidation and cost savings and those, those parts, is, I would say, not just are some of those programs serving their original intent, but is the cost benefit on the results of those programs worth it? Because, you know, as we're kind of alluding to, you know, some of these programs might be getting a return for a really high investment level, and we have so many areas of need that we need to invest in. So I don't think it's, it's just are those programs working? It's are they working at scale and the efficiency that we need? And, because, I mean, the feedback, I think, that everyone's received is, don't cut anything. Nobody wants, no one has sent me their list of what I would cut first. You know, it's, it's just, don't cut my program. And, and so I, I don't know that that's the most fruitful way to approach this. Unfortunately, you know, from my point of view, it's gonna be the rationale on what am I getting for this? And I, I think that's something I've heard from trustees seeing a lot, is like, what are we getting for this? And I would like to see that in the, that baseline that we're looking at, in, in the format of, this is gonna push our literacy rate up, this is gonna push our math scores up, because we're gonna be able to offer programming, and there can be diversity in that. So, you know, that doesn't have to be homogeneous, but, you know, I would like to see how it's gonna deliver. Not, not a, a direct answer to the question, but I, you know, trying to frame it. I think you just kind of summarized this, there used to be this word that I hated that was used in public education, and it was ROI, return on investment. It's ridiculous, like, it should be, should not be used in public education. I use ROI as return on intent. That's kind of the way I think about it. It, it is totally acceptable, reasonable, and appropriate to spend more dollars over, you know, over a fewer number of students, but you, it has to meet the intent. Like, you have, there has to be a reason for it, right? Is it being done in a way to do X, to move outcome, whatever it might be? And so the question becomes, do we have programs that are, that are consuming resources, that are not meeting their intent, whatever that intent may be? And, and so it's a different question. It's harder to understand and harder to break down, but, you know, it's, it's hard to just compare like one cost over 10 students versus another cost over 10 students, and just assume that because one is greater than the other, then that's somehow not the appropriate thing to do. So, yeah, it's, it's complex, but the way you described it kind of made me think about that, because that's, that's kind of the hard work that we have in front of us. And it's hard to kind of thread throughout, because at the end of the day, a lot of folks just want to know the number, like, you know, how did you get here? You know, why did you pick this program or this program? And it's gonna be sometimes challenging to defend why the intent in this program over these number of students actually aligns with their values, moves outcomes, aligns with our scorecard in a better way than this other. It, it just doesn't always come out that cleanly, so I just wanted to offer that.
So one bounce off of that, I would say, for the second bullet point here, it says, are we offering the programs in the right places? I, I would maybe amend that, are we offering the right programs in the right places? You know, that's another way to look at, you know, how are we investing? And, you know, I wonder, I'm sure this is gonna potentially sound
And, you know, I wonder, I'm sure this is going to potentially sound not the way I'm intending it. But, you know, one thing that I see a lot in my personal experience, you know, people don't always take credit for what they're already doing. Or or schools and staff don't get credit for what they're already doing. And I think there are surely campuses that are above baseline, way above baseline. And we have other campuses that are below baseline. And I think that's something to consider is that as we're adjusting this and we're looking at these cuts, it's going to be really, I think, difficult for people to, you know, accept. But if you're above baseline and we're having to raise some of these other schools to meet the baseline, I think that's the pain that people are seeing with some of these cuts. And so again, I think it gets into the, you know, are the programs serving the original intent? You know, I think the second question, if are we offering the right programs in the right places is potentially more important because we need to look at what the proactive movement is to the underserved areas. Again, not a clean answer to these questions, but I think to meet those scorecard goals and to avoid the, you know, the constraints, that would be the way I would suggest we look at this.
And and I think another way to kind of extrapolate upon that, you know, you have schools that are above baseline and schools that don't have, haven't got to baseline because the resources haven't been deployed. Well, you know, there's also, you know, have, I mean, fewer schools, right? Because I mean, because if you're just netting from the top, then then you're distributing across all. The the conversation I think needs to be, if we want everybody to get here, you know, in an effort to reduce overall costs, that that is going to be one of the strategies that we deploy. And so it's both, right? I just kind of want to make that kind of clear as we move forward.
And then just one last one to bounce back in, just to keep reiterating it. Again, I want to keep dinging trustee Singh here. You know, at the end of the day, that's, I think, showing the community what they're getting for this consolidation, what they're getting on the campuses. And so, you know, we're saying baseline sounds very de minimis and that, you know, we're meeting this minimum standard. You know, we will be clear that we're offering a lot on the campuses that we're, that we're having. And I think that's where this all comes together. So, you know, if we're going to have specialized programs, they're accessible, they're reaching enough students, you know, they're having enough broad effect.
Sure, I agree with thinking the right program in the right place. I also think about the history of the programs that we're talking about, well, some of the programs that we're talking about and why they were created. I know that you said that the goal of the process is not integration, but we're inheriting programs that were specifically created in order to integrate populations and to meet kind of the student outcome deficit that our district has historically faced. And so I just wonder, my curiosity is if the current composition, distribution, even the qualities that students have to meet in order to be eligible to apply for certain specialized program that that go far and above what minimally is offered at other schools. Does that need, I mean, why? Why are we, I need it to be justified to me why that program is being maintained? If it's fallen very far away from its original intent? And if it comes at a cost within a finite financial system of providing basic needs in other campuses? I don't, and I also think historically, I wonder if there are opportunities to apply some of these different programs. I look at the district in 1996, when you referenced that year. And there are specific campuses within that academic year that were able to offer year-round school with a different set of, you know, parameters that the district had at that time. But I wonder if that's also an opportunity for programmatic change that might better meet especially those early literacy and numeracy goals that we've defined.
Let's say I'm intrigued by that, the other models idea, right? Which is part of what you're saying and part of what you're asking about. And and how can other models better support our goals? And I think year-round school, there's great data, as I understand it, that would support. And I would love to hear the administration's thoughts about that. I think, you know, we've been talking a lot, you know, here and there about the pre-K eight model and the continuity that brings. And we know we've been talking with our, with Doby Webb and Burnett, where we need the turnaround plans right now about student mobility. And and I wonder if the administration has thoughts about how a pre-K eight model and the year-round school model that Secretary Gonzalez talked about could play into that. And with, you know, a pre-K eight model perhaps that created a bigger attendance boundary that might reduce mobility, that would increase that continuity, both for our family engagement on our constraints and the academic achievement, that continuity. If we can talk about continuity and aligning vertical teams, is that a, is that turbocharging it to align it within a single school? When you think about, you know, third grade reading, third grade math, eighth grade algebra, you know, to really keep that, again, with that really tight community, with the the families deeply engaged? And then heading into high school with that kind of boost, I'd love your thoughts about that.
Yeah, you know, one of the reasons we wanted to present it was because we would like the flexibility in pursuing, exploring these models. Because, you know, there are parts of our school district where throughout the entire year, they're constantly enrolling and unenrolling students. I mean, I've had conversations with families and parents and staff about, you know, kind of the challenges of welcoming and creating, you know, that that culture and the welcoming feeling, as welcoming as they are already, when you're constantly going through this administrative experience. And so to the extent you can limit that, because the opposite, the other alternative is to add staff, add front office staff. You know, we hear about that a lot. And so I think for us, you know, if we can, we don't have a K, we don't have an EC eight. But if we could explore that to address some of the opportunities that we might find as part of this work, we'd like to have it. Some already exist that we have, I mean, you read them there. This one does not exist in Austin ISD at the moment. It does exist in other urban environments, so it can work. I think the main point here that I want to reinforce is that, you know, these school types can work, but they have to be done with fidelity. Like, we can't just do something half the way. Like, you have to lean in and do it and invest and know that it's going to be this one system or one component of a larger organization. Because where we've seen challenges is when you have the one-offs and we don't prepare for it or support it appropriately. So so whatever we do, I think it's important that, I think at this conversation, we would like the opportunity to explore it. We intend to explore it. Are there any thoughts, and it sounds like there's support to do it? And I do agree that those types of models, especially specifically K eight or EC eight, would mitigate against the the real issue of student mobility in certain parts of our of our city, for sure. I mean, it's just, there's some, and we have documents in the binder that help kind of demonstrate that as well. As far as, I think you said, year-round, you know, as far as mitigating against high mobility rates, I'd have to think about the structure, you know, if it was, you know, one school that's a part, supported at a larger geographic region. You know, it was opt-in, I mean, I think there's different models that we could use. If it was tied to one specific zone, you know, and and kind of was just a replacement of an existing school boundary, probably wouldn't work. I'd really want to think through, you know, how that could. You know, I I think that it definitely could exist, it, you know, we'd have to think through what that, kind of the impact of what we just talked about, but. Yeah. And it'd have to have a server larger geographic region, right? So everybody, so you'd have to kind of place it in a place, place it in a place, you'd have to locate it where we know it would thrive, given the live-in student population and the schools that are feeding into it.
This is such an important conversation, I know. How are we on time? Like, I know you made a mention of time, but like, are we eating into our?
I, as long as we're staying with student outcomes and really saying, like, how does year-round school impact our reading scores? We are solid.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes.
So I, so I.
And I am getting texts when we veer off track.
Thank you.
So, and I don't usually look at my texts during a meeting, but I am.
Okay, appreciate that. So I think this is such a great, I just, first of all, just huge appreciation to y'all. Like, this is such a great workshop. Y'all have done so much work for us to make it easier to have these discussions, so thank everyone for that. And I really appreciate the fact that we are looking at alternative models to make sure that we do hit the goals and targets that we've identified in our, in our scorecard. I think one, some things that come to mind are, you know, like, trying not to do everything all at once, obviously. I think, you know, there are some places where it might make sense to do certain things. And even like the year-round school, I really love that because there's a lot of research behind it. So I think like whatever we do, it should be, have some good research backing it up, you know, that's kind of a given. I think in terms of like, I think the previous slide, when we were talking about the opportunities that exist, I don't know if we can go back to that, thinking about like how we have special programings spread throughout the district. Previous slide. Yeah, previous slide. Yeah, this is really such a, I think this is really important. I, you know, I don't have a good sense of the logic behind where we place certain programs in our district. And so I don't know if we have like some sort of recommendations from the administration on like where we are redundant, where we have programs that are kind of maybe not so hot anymore and we can maybe sunset those. You know, working with Workforce Solutions and the Chamber and continuing to see like what are the regional things? I know there's this infrastructure academy going on right now. We have have a huge shortfall in the workforce that's like on the horizon. And so do we have enough programming in AISD to supply that regional workforce? If that's something that we're interested in doing. But more importantly, which is something that trustee Whitley Chu brought up a while back, and I, I don't remember if this was public or not or just a conversation, but you said something that has stuck with me, which is like, we've got all these great programs, but our kids can't access them because they're not passing the TSI, you know, which goes back to that fundamental, you know, reading and and math. So again, even if we offer cool programming, if kids, if kids aren't filling them up, then we should either shrink those programs or we need to just like pause and just like put way more resources to create the pipeline for those programs. But it drives me crazy, like, when I walk around LBJ, you know, and see this beautiful health sciences program, but knowing that it's under-enrolled. Well, that's like a CCMR, like, that is, you know, something that's tied to our our scorecard. It's something we've invested heavily in, but it's not being utilized. And we've, you know, so I just want us to think about all of that and this. Just be tighter with the programs that we offer, especially around like expensive ones, like good expensive programs like health sciences. Like, let's just be really tight about where they're offered and make sure we provide transportation. I know we've cut transportation a lot this year, but I do think transportation is going to have to be part of this whole discussion. Because we we might, like, when I, when I was thinking about, oh, wow, this is first day of school happening next week, and we've had high school orientations that are going on. And I know this year we're not providing buses to high school orientation. But we are providing buses to all sorts of other things in our district. And I just think about who's, who's getting what? It doesn't sit right with me, especially when you're thinking about who are the kids that really need, like, you know, when I see like northeast LBJ, like, kids are not going to get buses to their, to their high school orientation. A lot of these kids aren't going to go then, like, they're going to miss out on this great opportunity to get accustomed to their campus. And I I do think that has a direct impact on our, on their scorecard goals. So, but we, you know, so like, are we transporting the kids? Like, if we, if we have extra transportation, or like wherever we have like flexibility in our transportation budget, are we funneling it to the things that are going to move the needle on the things that we've identified as a board are the most important? I don't think we always have. So that goes along with the programming in the district for me.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think as well said, I, I think, you know, everything's going to come at a, at a cost. You know, I think that's just the honest truth, you know, to what you referenced, what trustee Whitley Chu said and what we said earlier. You know, if if we're going to invest in the things that actually prepare students to be on grade level, to learn how to, I mean, all the things, then then that's where our focus needs to be. And the limited dollars we have need to be hyper-thoughtful in how we distribute. And we have to free up resources. I think that at the end of the day, that's just how it's all connected. You know, we always talk about accountability, budget reductions, we talk about consolidation, it is all connected. And I think you just described a real great example. We just spent the better part of a year reducing transportation costs. And it is expensive. And many times we have programs for those four or five kids on a bus, and it's costing us a lot of money. We don't have the ability to find a lot of other solutions because of kind of the requirements of transporting students and kind of what that looks like. So we have to be really intentional. Yes, I I think it's, it's a disservice if we don't have students participating in their, you know, their, their, I guess, onboarding for for high school. That's, that's horrible. But, you know, there are, there are lots of things like that that we're going to encounter. I just, you know, so your point, I mean, I hear you, that's exactly the challenge.
And this is, this is the board, I think, that can actually really have respectful and thoughtful conversations about some of this stuff. So I do hope that we, we do visit that. I also wanted to mention one more thing is around, you're going to get mad at me for saying this. But, you know, no, I know you don't. But when I think about like our programs still serving their original intent, I'm also thinking about like our buildings, our spaces serving their original intent. And and that, I think, like, I do, I do have questions about this building that we're in right now. And you don't have to respond or anything right now, but I do hope that that is part of the thought process here because it's going to come up. And we need to have an answer, you know, and really understand is having our staff and using all the floors of this building, or except for the one for the Y, which is awesome, is that the best use of our resource, our limited resources right now? And so I'll just leave it at that, but I do hope that that is somehow acknowledged or addressed. And if it's a terrible idea, then put that out there, but tell us why. I think that'd be really helpful in building trust as well.
Thank you, are we, do we feel like we've talked about models? Do you feel like you have what you need from us on that?
Yes.
Trustee DiOrioste, yeah?
Sorry, just one quick thought, I think both on models and on the specialized programming. Particularly specialized programming, one of the things, going through these cuts, one of the ways I've been framing it is obviously some of these programs are essential and we still might have to cut them. And so in looking at that, one of the things that would be helpful is what would it take? Or how difficult would it be to restart one of these programs or to restore what we're cutting? I don't know if that's a metric that's too complicated or, you know, problematic to look at. But I think, you know, much in the way that we're looking at getting back to the fun balance, I do think there's a line between, you know, if we're doing something to tighten the belt and that we are going to be telling the community, hey, we want to be able to do this again. It would be helpful to know if something that we're cutting is going to be extremely difficult to ever get back as opposed to something that we think we might be able to get back to in a short amount of time. And on the flip side of that, then with some of these alternative models, how difficult they would be to get off the ground or would some of them be easier to implement? I think that's also worthwhile to look at.
Both great points.
Thank you.
I also just, this is going backwards a little bit, but I just wanted to address two topics that haven't really come up much yet. And so I just wanted to address directly on special education programming and what that should look like at schools. And I do feel that we should be explicit with what we are, what are the baseline offerings at our elementary and our middle and our high schools for special education? And that to the extent that we can, my dream for that, and I think the dream of many in our community is that we provide a continuum of support at every school so that students can be in their least restrictive environment, in their neighborhood school, whatever that is, and receive the support in an inclusive environment where they get their services. And I think that requires us to reexamine like our centralized placements, it requires us to reexamine the purpose of and the. us to reexamine the purpose of and the benefit and the, the effectiveness of our specialized programs. Does life skills serve its purpose? Does ECSE serve its purpose? Does scores serve its purpose? Does SBS serve its purpose? Or are these simply categories that we've kind of stuck with for years and we put kids in there and we create placements for them? So I think this is a great opportunity for us to be looking at that in conjunction with our, you know, efforts to improve special education overall, to really look and say, can we create campuses where every student has the opportunity to be in an inclusive setting as much as humanly possible? That's one. And then the other area that we didn't directly address, we talked briefly mentioned the school-wide dual-language programs. And I really appreciate how the school-wide dual-language programs were considered as a certain category, as a specialized program. But it, it sounds like you're distinguishing between a school-wide dual-language program and like dual-language, right? Because, and so that piece, so school-wide dual-language is a specialized program. It is a thing we create an opportunity for all kids in that school to be part of the program. But I'm glad that we didn't ever talk about dual-language as being a specialized program because as I think our district fully understands from throughout our departments now, is that dual-language is a core academic program that our students who are identified as emergent bilingual with Spanish on their home language have a right to. So that piece I would like to throw out there as well. That is a highly geographic issue that we have to revisit because our students who are eligible for and have a right to dual-language education are concentrated in certain areas of the district. So how do we address the fact that, you know, where can we, where can we revisit our effort to have it available with a well-implemented, inclusive dual-language program at the schools where the kids are with an opportunity for every one of them to have a continuous feeder pattern that Dr. Foster mentioned earlier, so that that feeder pattern is continuous so that they don't end dual-language in fifth grade and not have the opportunity to continue towards the seal of by literacy? So I just wanted to throw those two things into the mix and make sure, because I know that those are two things that the community's talked about as well.
So I just, you know, looking at the scorecard and, you know, talking about budgetarily, the status quo is, is unaffordable right now. And we look at student achievement under the status quo, it is also not serving students. The concentrated wealth and concentrated poverty is not helping any of our students in this district achieve their, their match, maximum potential. All students are missing out on critical thinking skills that we have evidence that a school environment where that has diverse representation economically provides. And, you know, Dr. Foster asked a question, like, is it possible to, if we put enough resources into a school with concentrated poverty, like, would that move the outcomes? And like, really, we'll never know here in Texas because that, that's never happened. We've, we've never done it. But we have seen that diverse schools raise the boats for everyone, that economically diverse schools do that. So I just broadly am supportive of transfer policies, aligned vertical team that build cohesive communities that reflect our city and having those demographics at all of our campuses and opportunities at all of our campuses to, to reflect that. And I think what I don't want to see, that we've seen over and over again, that doesn't look at student outcomes, is allowing adults to speak negatively about students, to say that they aren't welcome there. That has been moving a lot of our policies and that, that has nothing to do with student achievement and, and it's not true. So I think that's something that we have to, to shut down now. I'd never seen anything like that before, but that's, you know, something that we saw recently that shut down an opportunity for some of our students with the highest needs. And so that, that time has to be over. If you are scared, if you're concerned, if you don't know and you have, you know, questions, we, we can have those conversations with people in small groups, in private, but it cannot be, you know, amplified on a mic in front of our kids because that damages their achievement, being, being treated and othered like that. So that is something I, I don't want to see part of this process. I want it to, to focus on making sure every child is in an excellent school and that we have to be brave to do that. And we have to decide what is, what are our goals and what's acceptable and not acceptable in considering what we do here.
Thank you. Any further comments before we adjourn? Excellent. Thank you all for the conversation. Thank you, Ashley, for the coaching that helped make space for this and helped us give the administration what they need and helped us really, for ourselves, our community, and ultimately for our students, ground this in the Y. So thank you all for this. And secretary Gonzalez, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have adjourned our meeting at 10:15 PM. Thank you all and thank you, superintendent, for this great work.